We'd like to call to order a regular city commission meeting for August 3rd, 2021 at 7:00 PM. Please have the full call.
Yeah. Yeah. Here. Here.
Here, thank you, my everyone please silence their phones. Uh, we're also gonna do a moment of silence and our pledge of allegiance. When we do our moment of silence, I'd like to have everyone please keep their thoughts and prayers. Uh, former deputy Harold Morrison, the prior sheriff's office who's here in Deerfield Beach for many, many years. Uh, Harold was the person who started the backpack giveaway that we do every year over at the Eden Park. Uh, Carol unfortunately passed away over the weekend. A fantastic individual and a real champion for the children here in the city of Deerfield Beach. So, please think of your thoughts and prayers. Moment of silence. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Very tricky with Zoom that you don't wanna stand up, these cameras on you. Pledge of allegiance because you end up giving it wrong. You people at home, so please apologize for that. Um, if we could have the cause members see board meeting minutes, the New York Board of Retired Meeting Minutes of March 8th, 2021. The Community Parents Board Meeting Minutes of May 26th, 2021. The African American Heritage Board Meeting Board Meeting Minutes from April 29th, May 11th, May 19th, May 27th, and June 2nd, 2021. And the Hillsborough Inlet District Meeting Minutes from June 21st, 2021.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion from Vice Mayor, we have a second by Commissioner. Arness, all papers say aye.
Aye.
That's opposed. And we have our approval of our agenda tonight for August 3rd, 2021. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by the Vice Mayor, second by Commissioner, who that calls papers say aye.
Aye.
Sound clear.
Remember, some will probably motion to the law office, trying to find some improvement as we allow. However, one vision will make a point on their needs. Anyone connected online to this video, I'll cover their mouth as a part of the conversation. On the right, raise hand, you'll be recognized by your profile name and your audio and the audio. For anyone participating via mobile or landline, clouds starting on, raise your hand. You will be recognized by the last three digits of your phone number and you may now start six on your business card.
Thank you. We have our first item on the agenda. Who's gonna be making his presentation? City manager online.
Good evening, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can, there you go, right ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, um. Mr. Mike, Mr. Vice. Before you get started, if you don't mind, I'm sorry, I was on mute. Good, good evening, uh, can everybody hear, can you hear me okay on that end?
Yes.
Thank you, good. Now, first and foremost, I do wanna apologize for not being there in person for the city commission meeting. Um, but I'm sure each of you could appreciate and uh, me not being there as I am, uh, I have tested positive for COVID-19 even though I have been vaccinated, so I do want to apologize for not being there this evening. Uh, live, but um, I, I am here over Zoom and, and ready to participate. The first item on the agenda today is a, is a presentation of the, of the American Rescue Plan Act funds. And as the city commission is aware, we, we received sixteen point two million dollars of those funds. We have engaged the government services group to give us guidance. Uh, through the recommendation of projects and the expenditure of the funds as it is a very complicated uh, process and sixteen point two million dollars is something that we want to take very seriously. Um, as it relates to not only how we spend these dollars, but to ensure that we spend them appropriately so that we're not seeing clawbacks five to 10 years from now. This is something that, you know, FEMA is, is, has done to us in the past. And we wanna make sure that we're dotting our i's and crossing our t's throughout this entire process. And so we have engaged the government services group and David, uh, Jahaz, he to assist us and his team to assist us through that process. And we have a bit of a presentation, staff has been working very closely with them. Uh, they have been on site, uh, and via Zoom for, for several days over the past month to review what, uh, projects have been submitted by staff. Um, the final guidance has not come out yet and we do expect the final guidance from the treasury to come out sometime later this month, towards the end of this month. At which time we'll have a much clearer picture of where our projects, uh, will line up with, with the guidance. And then we'll, at that point, be in a position to come before the city commission with a staff recommendation on potential projects for the expenditure of those ARP funds. Based on, um, uh, some methodology that I think we might talk about a little bit later. If we don't, well, David will, will hit on how we're kind of approaching the projects, uh, towards the end. Uh, but with that, if we could go ahead and bring up the presentation and I'll turn it over, over to David.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, um, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of the commission, thank you for having, um, GSG present this evening. Um, also, uh, in our offices, I would like to have been there in person this evening, but I apologize for doing this remote as we have also had folks. Um, yet yesterday in our office when I was there who actually went out, so, uh, in, uh, in the abundance of caution, we thought it would be best to do this remotely. Um, if we could advance to the next slide, please. So that there are a few things that we wanted to talk to you about tonight. And, and our methodology approach has really been built upon the lessons that we learned during the CARES Act. Uh, GSG, um, assisted ten counties during the CARES, during the administration of the CARES Act services. We helped administer over seventy million dollars worth of funds and there were several things that we have learned. Uh, not only working with the state, but also, uh, guidance that came down from the US Treasury. And we leveraged that into the next topic that we wanna talk a little bit about, which is to give an overview of the American Rescue Plan. Uh, with that, we also wanna talk about the period of performance for which, uh, we are working under as part of, uh, our project. Uh, you know, some of the general uses and eligible uses of the funds and then have a wrap up at the end to, to discuss any questions or, or address comments that you might have, uh, at this point, uh, we can go to the next slide, please. So when we look at what we experienced during, during the CARES Act, the CARES Act was really, was really a mad dash. As, as I'm sure you probably will can attest to, um, you had to gotten money from the county, uh, you know, after probably an August, September time period. You barely had enough time to get the money in order and, and then the deadline was there in December. Um, and in that time period, uh, the US Treasury kept releasing frequent guidance, um, and updates for the CARES Act. Uh, it required a lot of, uh, coordination internally, um, in, not only in terms of your department, but also working with the county. Um, we, we've learned that we, we need to prioritize needs now and maintain flexibility. We, we really, we really are trying to use this time to plan accordingly. And really what we've also learned is that if we can increase the amount of coordination and cooperation internally and also really understand what the other programs are being provided, not only by the county, but at the state. We can really use that as a basis to stretch your American Rescue Plan dollars. Um, if we can go to the next slide, please. So, as with any type of federal program, um, and then prior to by joining GSG about four years ago, I spent nearly fifteen years with a big four accounting firm and, and had the benefit of, if you remember, the American Reinvestment Recovery Act, um, during President Obama's administration. Where we went out, um, and basically audited hundreds of local governments, state governments, for-profit, nonprofit entities. And, and really there are four themes of issues that, that seem to come out. Um, it starts always with eligibility determination in terms of what, if the program that you're doing or the people, the, or the services or the expenditures, are they allowable? Um, another thing we really have to pay close attention to, as, uh, Mr. Solace did, uh, during the CARES Act is duplication of benefits. When, when you're, when you have a program that you're offering at the city, that may be the same program that's offered by the state, the county, or the federal government. We have to be very careful that we don't duplicate benefits. Uh, there needs to be consistent treatment of how we classify and categorize things. And then most important is having adequate documentation, is not only having the right amount of information to support the conclusions and to, and to provide documentation regarding expenses and expenditures. But it's making sure that you don't have too much information or irrelevant documentation at hand. Uh, and it's, it's really important because as Mr. Santucci had alluded to, we, we're looking at at least ten years out, um, before this program is gonna be over. Um, if we can go to the next slide, please. So if you think about the magnitude of the American Rescue Plan, it's the first time in US history that a federal presidential declaration has touched all fifty states, all counties, all cities, all tribal governments and all other territories and like the District of Columbia. So just, if, if you can put that in perspective in terms of what the state of Florida typically has to deal with during hurricane season. You take that and you multiply it by an infinitesimal amount and it's just a lot of different inputs and throughputs going through the system. Really what we're focusing in on is while there are many different programs, um, under the American Rescue Plan. The one that's highlighted in yellow, the local fiscal relief, is the program that we have been hired to help the city implement, which is really, it's your local application of the American Rescue Plan. Uh, and in that, um, stream of money that's coming down from the federal government is about three hundred and sixty billion dollars. Um, I just wanna draw your attention to the middle box, which is rental assistance, assistance and mortgage assistance, the housing and rental piece. Because there's additional dollars flowing down through that in excess of, uh, thirty billion dollars. Um, that's going out through different sources, um, if we could move to the next slide, please. So one of the things that we wanted to talk about, um, there's, there are six areas that we wanted to discuss regarding eligible uses under that yellow box, um, that on the previous slide where we talked about the state and local government funding. And the first one is really about supporting the public health response. Um, and this can be anything from making improvements, um, to areas regarding contact tracing to medical expenses of, of your staff and personnel. Um, most cities and county governments will, will utilize this for their public health and safety staff, which really doesn't apply for the city of Deerfield Beach since you are contracting with the county for both police and fire services. But it, it's also things, uh, for things for like social distancing as well as personal protective equipment. And, and really you can also use it for making improvements to certain venues that, um, allow for social distancing like certain of your parks and recreational facilities that you can use, um, that keep people safe. Um, and really to kinda help improve their overall mental health and outlook. Um, if we can go to the next slide, please. Oops. I think this is the next one, page seven. So the next one is, is really about a premium pay for essential workers. It, and what this does is it allows local governments to provide premium pay um, to employees or third-party employers, um, that provide additional compensation or benefit. Uh, just from our experience in the clients that we have been working with is that um, there are some concerns expressed by other clients and they're, they're hesitant to, to actually implement um, this type of program in their city or county because they're afraid that it's going to establish some disparities between their employees. And then there's also the, the impact, the financial impact that if you do pay a premium pay, not only are you paying someone above potentially market price for what the services are providing, but there's the other benefits like taxes and insurance and benefits like, uh, your pension care and things like that that go on it. But then there's the ability, what happens after this program ends? Are you going to take the funding away from that individual and lower their payback? So there, there's just a lot of uncertainties and for that reason, um, most of our other clients really aren't looking at this use of funds uh, for their American Rescue Plan. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, this is an area that, uh, we have been encouraging all of our clients to look at. Um, it's something even at the national organizations like the Government Finance Officers Association and the National League of Cities. Is that there are, um, additional flexibilities that can be garnered by the city if they go through this calculation and really what this is, is it's, it's to look at your growth rates and the amount of revenues that were generated. Um, starting back in, in fiscal nineteen and it can actually be calculated at four different points in time during the duration of the eligibility period, um, and you can claim up to the sixteen million dollars, um, that has been allocated to the city as part of the American Rescue Plan. Um, so we have been working closely with Ms. Tinsley and her staff and finance to come through and, and, and to work through some of the initial baseline calculations. And, uh, and as, uh, Mr. Santucci had alluded to earlier, we are really waiting until the final guidance comes out. Um, until we look to actually start, um, making, uh, some final tweaks to these numbers just to make sure that we, we truly understand all the program requirements. Uh, if we can go to the next slide, please. So this is one of the major areas, um, that the city is considering as other, other clients are, is really water and sewer infrastructure. And, uh, there, there's actually a couple added benefits to this is that if, if there are projects that are being proposed that meet either of the state revolving funds, uh, project classifications and designated designations, then they are generally deemed to be allowable, um, under the American Rescue Plan. Uh, and there's also a couple of other things that have been waived, one which is Davis Bacon requirements, which is usually very time-consuming. Um, and that's, uh, that's a, a, a monitoring requirement that has been removed, uh, per the American Rescue Plan, as well as there have been other um, EPA requirements that have been, um, waived, uh, as long as you use the American Rescue Plan services. Uh, if we can go to the next slide, please. Uh, broadband infrastructure is another area that a lot more of the rural counties are really, and the cities are looking at to enhance um, capabilities and access to reliable services. Really not so much of an issue in the urban area and really not a major issue, uh, within, uh, the city. There are though some o- other types of projects that are related to the broadband infrastructure, but not the major emphasis of, of what we have been discussing with the city team so far. Yeah, if we can go to the next slide, please. So just as important as there are things that you can use the money for, uh, the guidance specifically states there are things you cannot use it for. Um, you cannot put the money into rainy day funds or into your reserves, um, they cannot be used to pay, um, defined pension plans. Uh, it can be used to compensate if you have individuals that you're paying their salaries and there's a normal part of, uh, their compensation that you do fund, you know, retirement benefits, you can use it for that. Really what they're meaning here is that if you had an unfunded pension liability, you can't use it, uh, to justify, um, payments to the, uh, to the pension fund. Um, they're not allowing right now the use of debt service, so any and all capital projects that you're looking to approve uh, need to be completed within the time period. And similar to, um, other federal programs, and this is going to be run as a grant under the federal guidance of two CFR 200. Uh, legal settlements and judgments are prohibited. Uh, any type of general infrastructure spending is prohibited unless there's a little loophole there, unless you um, go through the revenue loss calculation, which is one of the reasons why we're doing it. Uh, and then the final thing is you cannot use the American Rescue Plan dollars, um, as a non-federal match to federal programs. Um, next slide, please. So really what does it mean right now? Um, well, as Mr. Santucci, uh, had mentioned earlier, right now we are stressing patience to our clients. Uh, we, we don't like to get too far out in front of the, the treasury and other types of federal programs when they haven't been finalized. We do think that the, the, that the program final rule will come out this month, uh, with the passing, it looks like, the impending passing of the infrastructure bill. Um, we think that now that that looks like it's going to be passed, uh, we think that they're gonna move forward now. Um, in terms of issue and the final guidance related to the American Rescue Plan. And really what we're doing is we're using this time right now for planning purposes and to pri- and to prioritize the use of funds. Um, because these are dollars as from an investment standpoint, really have to last you the next three to five years. Um, next slide, please. So we, we mentioned the period of performance, so, uh, under the program guidelines, any, any eligible expense, as long as it was uh, dated on or after March 3rd of this year is eligible. And it ha- and the projects have to be approved, incurred, obligated. Um, and what we believe that means is that when we come back at some point, um, in the near future and we provide, you know, a listing of plans and projects that the commission will approve. Um, as long as that is done prior to December 31st of 2024, which we believe that will be done well before then. Um, you, you still have an additional two years to actually spend, the expense, the actual dollars. So if you do have some capital projects that are going on and taking a little bit longer period of time. Um, they do give you the benefit of a couple of years to actually get the, um, the projects paid for and closed out. Uh, next slide, please. So what has been accomplished to date? Um, so the city staff, so as we mentioned earlier, the guidance was signed on, um, or I'm sorry, the, the American Rescue Plan was approved on March 11th of this year. Um, the treasury provided guidance in, um, early April that, uh, you know, some of the rules and stuff were coming out, so in advance of that, the city actually went through the process to open up uh, a, a specific bank, a new bank account to segregate expenses and to track expenses separately, um, as well as, uh, setting up the, the corresponding accounts in the, uh, the city's chart of accounts. Um, and end of May of this year, uh, after the application period was opened by the US Treasury, the city actually submitted its application for the fifty percent or the first tranche of the funds. Um, that notice was received in June and on June 7th, the, the money was receiveded and deposited and is in arrest now in the city bank account. Just one little, um, note here is that, um, the way that the funding works is that the, the city would not be eligible to submit a request for the second reimbursement because it comes in two parts. Um, no earlier than May 24th of 2022, it has to be a, a twelve-month, um, break between, uh, reimbursement one and the request for reimbursement number two. Uh, next slide, please. So wanna spend a little time talking about this slide, um, because this is really where it boils down to where we have been spending a lot of time with, uh, the city, the city staff, Mr. Santucci, and trying to gain, uh, insights into really what the priorities are and what they look like they may be for the city for the next three to five years. So w- we have slightly changed the, the terminology a little bit, um, into three categories. We, we talked about six categories earlier, we, we really kinda broke it into three. Um, in the first category, which really we call strengthen the local community, really ties to addressing the negative economic impact. Um, and really what this is to do is it's, it's, it's to look about hiring and retaining, you know, not only your local employees, but assisting nonprofits. It's a way to help serve your residents and there's some great ideas that have come out as part of the early sessions like Business Incubator and, and hiring hire Deerfield Beach, meaning keeping some of your, uh, folks there locally. Um, as well as providing resource services and interventions for youth and families, um, as part of some of the nonprofit programs. Now, in the second tier, we, we say invest in key infrastructure. Um, you know, the ones that we really have identified here really have to do more with water, wastewater and stormwater, which is also an allowable expense. And they, and they fall into a variety of different types of stormwater improvements. Uh, there's a beach re-nourishing project, project which also ties in to, uh, tourism within the city as well as part of your stormwater management plan. Um, there's some advanced metering projects, some improvements over at the water plant as well as rehabilitation of one of the wells. And then the third area, um, which is really about supporting public health. Um, and, and these projects really tie back into, um, social distancing, providing some, you know, ease of interaction and, and reducing the, the physical touch between, um, folks as, you know, as the pandemic continues to spread, which you know, talks about, you know, signage for city hall and key pay, or Bill Kate kiosk and, you know, um, touchless devices for entering and exiting facilities. Um, and then there's a couple other things in here which, um, may, may not necessarily think, which really tie strongly back into, uh, public health in the long term is really the aquatic center upgrade and the beach facility improvements. Cause we know that those two facilities received a disproportionate, um, number of visitors and users during the pandemic. And some of those things require some, um, advanced maintenance as well as upgrades to handle future use. Um, as we expect over the next several years, um, as we continue to work through the pandemic. Um, if we can go to the next slide, please. So one of the, one of the ways that we think that the, the city can continue stretching its six point two million dollar allocation and really um, being able to, to do more with less and driving some, you know, overall efficiencies is is, is that there's the rental program, the emergency rental assistance program, which came out between the CARES Act initially and the American Rescue Plan under the final days of the Trump administration in December of 2020. Uh, they issued something called the Ameri- or the Emergency Rental Assistance Program. Uh, within this program, it provided emergency rental relief for up to, uh, twelve months of rent for the, the rears and and forward-looking rent for individuals that qualify as well as utility assistance. Um, that, that program is actually being managed by Broward County. Broward County received an allocation of about fifty-three million dollars from the US Treasury to administer this program. And what's important to, to note here is that the city can provide this service as part of your American Rescue Plan. However, you would have to essentially opt out of the county's program, which then puts a pretty significant administrator burden on the city uh, in terms of looking at duplication of benefits. And then you would then be, the city would then be required to do the eligibility termination and the approvals and the recertifications and it's a very time-consuming process. Um, and then the other area which there still isn't, the program has not yet been allocated and the guidance really hasn't been specified too clearly. Is that there's ten billion dollars set aside for mortgage assistance. Um, so that's another program that, uh, we would suggest and recommend like our other clients are, are doing is, is not to offer those, those individual assistance services as part of your American Rescue Plan. Because if you think back to the, one of the initial slides is that there's a separate funding pool for these services and, um, uh, this will also then allow you to stretch your, your allocation a little bit further. Uh, next slide, please. So some of the existing, um, programs that the, that the city has here, um, is in what they did during the, um, Care, uh, the, the CARES Act, uh, and even prior to that is that there's already two major programs being run by the, I believe it's the Housing Authority. Um, one is under individual assistance and the other is under small business assistance. And these were under the Community Development Block Grant portion of funding. So it's very similar in terms of the rental assistance program and the mortgage assistance program. Um, but the challenge is, is that, you know, in order to do all these different programs, you really have to have good mechanisms in place. Um, and so it's another reason why we suggest that it's not something as part of the American Rescue Plan that we would recommend. Uh, implementing a, a new individual or a new small business assistance program. Also because staff had noted that during the time, um, while there's adequate resources, that there's been a reduction in demand for the services in Deerfield Beach. So, uh, just something to keep in mind is, as you go through, um, and consider some of the things we talked about, um, next slide, please. And then finally I wanted to touch on this, there's also some additional federal programs for individuals, um, for individual assistance through the Florida Department of Health for health-related type issues. Um, there's money for, um, for small business initiatives, for home-based businesses. Uh, comes through the state of Florida, uh, it's a program that's backed by the US Treasury. Uh, there's separate funding for, for. Uh, there's separate funding for, for funding streams for uh, nonprofits. Um, and then finally that there's, there's also uh, additional loans and credits and stuff being applied to businesses. Um, by the IRS and other federal programs um, that really don't necessarily duplicate. But it's a, it's an additional source of opportunities for individuals and businesses to go after. That the city does not necessarily have access to. And then next slide please. So what we're wanting to do tonight was to kind of walk you through the progress that we've made to date. And really to talk about from a conceptual framework perspective, um, you know. Uh, to give you some time to think and, and review the, the presentation that we have provided, you know, are we on the right track here? As it relates to um, the three, the three priorities, the three major priorities, which is, you know, looking at infrastructure projects. Strengthening your local community and supporting the public health initiatives. Um, you know, we've been through a process um, where we have been reviewing some of the proposed projects for consideration. Um, once those have been vetted out internally and we've had an opportunity to, to present that to the, to the ci- to the city manager. For his consideration and approval. Uh, at some point in the future, we would then like to come back to the commission. Um, with a recommendation, a list for final approval. Um, but the other thing is, we just wanted to ask is that, you know, as you're thinking about this, if there's something that you think that we have overlooked or missed. Um, or we have additional questions, we'd be happy to, to, to address those. And then um, finally, we did, on the next slide. Really just wanted to, to provide is that this uh, guidance to some of uh, the national organizations like GFOA. And the National League of Cities as well as obviously um, access to the homepage where all this documentation comes from. Uh, this is something that our team, we monitor literally on a daily basis, sometimes multiple times a day. Um, just to make sure that we are getting all of uh, the information up to date and that we can keep the city and the city's team uh, up to date. As well as changing, changes to the programs. Um, and then if we go to the next slide, that really concludes the, the formal comments that I had for. Uh, this evening, but at this point I'd be happy to answer any questions, comments, and I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. Santucci.
Thank you, David. I appreciate it. And just one of the things I wanted to touch upon in terms of how we're going about. Uh, reviewing projects and how this has played out so far. And as, as David did say, you know, we're still waiting for the final guidance. Because in, until we get that, we're, you know, it may kick some projects out and maybe put some into play. Um, but at the end of the day, you can see um, the direction that I've given staff in terms of where their head should be at. In terms of how we should spend these, these, these dollars. And that is to invest in the community in terms of infrastructure and improving the community and supporting our businesses as well. Um, the list of projects submitted by um, staff was extremely uh, great. They did a great job with submitting projects. They were very creative with the very limited guidance that we got from the treasury in the onset of the bill. Which, you know, put um, the related expenditures into four broad categories. And it's really what we had to go off of uh, in the onset. With that list and the engagement of Government Services Group, they reviewed those projects, the project descriptions, the justifications, the needs. Were able to determine some of them would be qualified, some might not be qualified. But at the end of the day, we took the approach and we're still taking this approach. Uh, listing the project in terms of a staff priority, meaning in our best assessment, which ones. Do we really need to do? And, and that's difficult because we're talking about dozens and dozens of projects. So the best of our ability, we've tried to prioritize the projects based on need. And then GSG turned around and they said, okay. Well, based on that priority, we're also going to look at it from the perspective of risk. And I asked them to do that specifically because I think it's important to remember. That there is the potential down the road, ten years down the road, five years down the road, that, you know. This is going to get audited and from my perspective, we want to err on the side of caution. Uh, when it comes to the expenditure of these dollars. So they, they looked at it from, from the perspective of risk. And using an equation, they came up with some sort of uh, way in which to analyze not only the priority, but the risk and come up with a weighted criteria. And that, that's the, that's the methodology we're going to be using when we, when we present the full list of projects to the city. But um, if you could go back to, I think it was the project slide, um, Heather. On the presentation, um, you can see a general idea of where we are focusing our efforts. And so we talk about. On their uh, stormwater projects. Uh, we know that we have some, some stormwater needs in this city. Specifically the two that I would ask the commission to consider and will be asking the commission to consider would be. Uh, Deer Run and I, and Southwest Eighth over District uh, One. Those are two areas of high, high need in terms of stormwater projects. And we are moving forward in the direction of design uh, for those, those projects. We actually have some workshops coming up. Um, here in September to show those communities that can set thirty percent conceptual design standards that we have. Um, and, and how those projects will look and what they'll, what they will accomplish. Uh, but behind that thirty percent conceptual dot design, we're going to need the, the final design and construction dollars to bring those projects home. And um, ARP seems to be a very uh, a very good way for us to, to look at those projects. And to fund those projects in the immediacy and, and, and the amount of time that we need to get these done because these projects are imminent. Um, the beach re-nourishment project, we know that we are, we are contractually obligated to do the beach re-nourishment project. We are, we're, we're looking at that one very closely um, for eligibility. Um, so we're, we're continuing to look at that. And then, you know, the aquatic center upgrades, as we talked about, this is, this is about. You know, having uh, parks, any, not any, but mostly parks and recreation facilities are, are getting a lot of attention for the ARP. Because it was, you know, well known during the pandemic that parks and recreation was a significant uh, resource for communities. In terms of being able to have some quality of life. And uh, so there, there are some projects in here that I think that fit really well. Not only in terms of eligibility, but in terms of need, needs for the city. And I'm happy to discuss more of this uh, with you. Um, should you have any questions?
Thank you. I have a few actually on this. Um. I, I'm certainly we don't want to jeopardize ourselves and deal with the future uh, clawback. We've seen that happen in the past, especially when something is written and funding comes in from the government and then they kind of change rules halfway through. And, and, and I understand our hesitancy and not wanting to do that. We have a lot of infrastructure. Uh, projects and, and we mentioned Southwest Eight and Deer Run, obviously those are two of the highest priorities we have. But we have other areas as well. And while we do have a funding mechanism with the um. Uh, stormwater be, be put in place, that gives us funding for some projects in the immediate, but not all. This funding would certainly help us tackle the majority of the issues we have out there. And I want us to be able to, to utilize that as quick as possible, but I am concerned with the language that says it cannot be used. For general infrastructure spending. So how can you say it can be, cannot be used for that? On one hand, and on the other hand, say that it could be used for stormwater projects. So um, I know there's a loophole, you said about. Being tied to revenue loss, but this seems like that fall outside.
Yes, specifically within uh, the ARP, local government spending, one of the categories is water. Wastewater, infrastructure. And then that, that was in the actual law. And then the treasury guidance came out to expand that to include stormwater projects, which was something that we pushed. Um, a lot of, a lot of lobbying efforts through the Florida League of Cities and the US Conference of Mayors. To try to get stormwater projects included in that, uh, which was successful. So there is a category specific to those funding. And uh, David talked a little bit about projects that fall into the revolving funds category. And I, I can't remember the other one, David, but as long as, as, as we're, 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 we're in that lane. Uh, we're good to go from an infrastructure perspective at, with water. But he also talked about the category of spending for the revenue loss, which is a much broader category. Um, for us to use of the, our spending on. But what's in, what's, I think what's more important is the more boxes we can check for these projects, the better off we are.
Okay, uh, I just want to make sure that we're shovel ready as much as possible, that when this funding, when we're able to move forward with it. We're doing it as quick as possible. It's, it's need of government enough, i- it is a problem, just in our regular day funding issue. But on projects like this, let's make sure we can move forward as fast as possible. Then we'll move in that direction. The other thing is with the rental assistance programs, I know we are continuing to do that, we've been doing that outside of the funding we just received. But this week, there was a story in CNBC had a, a, talking about the expiration of rental assistance for the. Um. Protecting people from being evicted and having that expired. Uh, one of the people quoted in there was a resident city of Deerfield Beach. Um, yes, I believe it was a family of four and they said that they were already twenty thousand dollars uh, in the rears regarding their, the rent. And what the article didn't say is that person actually had already worked with the city and received the maximum ten thousand dollars. Now, for a family of four, two thousand dollars a month is probably what their rent is. Um, just as a, we'll just guess and say that's, that's pretty close to what the standard rates are going right about now. Um, at a maximum of ten thousand, that does not give them a lot of protection. I want to make sure that, you know, with this potential crisis that we have. People have faced, um, that, that we're able to use some of that funding to, to further assist them. Is that, do we have the ability to go beyond the ten thousand max or are we still limited to that?
We're still limited with that at this point with the, the funding that we have. Um, that is, that is where, that, that's where the funding is right now. Um, will the, the federal administration um, reach deeper and expand that program? We don't know. We do know that uh, President Biden right now is pushing for a two month extension of the eviction moratorium. He may get that, but frankly, that, there is uh, the possibility that it may be challenged uh, with the Supreme Court. Um, but we did talk about other dollars that are, that may be available for assistance for families like the one you, you mentioned. But as it relates specifically to rental assistance dollars right now, it is six months and a maximum of ten thousand dollars. So we have provided the maximum allowable uh, benefit to, to, to that individual and many individuals like.
But that assistance, assistance is too full because you have people who own the property that have not been able to collect the revenue. Obviously putting them in that financial position. And you also have these families that are from the risk of people on the streets, so. It's disappointing we can't go above that act stuff. That's the only questions I have. Thank you. Make sure you do that.
Uh, it's a very good, uh, very good presentation. We really appreciate it. Uh, first of all, Southeast Eight Ave, which I'm just moving along place. Um, uh, city, uh, city manager and assistant, assistant city manager and I have talked for months. How eight or nine months, uh, to Southeast Eight Ave. So this is uh, very kind of, uh, it was a, a note from last week, just now. So I really appreciate you pushing for this project and making sure that it's uh, it is something that, um, you can point to. And I just want to say I appreciate that. And I do all my, all my last people on the side.
Questions?
Um, I would like to ask the city manager, did you identify um, any of the other stormwater concerns towards flooding and that sort of thing? Provide relief for all of the districts that I can tell you, particularly I have some issues the district do. Have you checked it out? And do you know of any areas that are, of particularly challenge?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. So with the, the grant fund, the grant that we have today to get us the thirty percent conceptual drawings. For four projects, one project in each district was chosen. Um, so your, every district is being looked at for, for need. And so a project is in design within District Two, and I believe that area is around the MLK area. Um, but in terms of greatest need of getting construction dollars and funding immediately. Without a doubt, I can tell you that it's, as I stand corrected, Southeast Eighth Ave and um. And, and Deer Run. Those are extreme flood prone areas. And the FEMA flood designations fully support that.
Um, the mayor was talking about the rental assistance and uh, you know, I had this question about it. Would he actually pretty much add the question, uh, or these both concerns that, that uh, I had, um. Do you feel that there will be a flexibility? Um, with the rental assistance, seeing that we now have a real surge of the COVID situation. Which um, is added to that dilemma and creating issues with that. You anticipate that there will be some way that uh, as far as the rental assistance is concerned. That they will lapse the program enough so that, that it will be easy, easier for families to access the funds.
That, that's a great question, uh, Vice Mayor, but quite frankly, I, I, I couldn't tell you whether or not. That's going to happen. What I can't tell you is that the county's sitting on fifty three million dollars. I'm sure they spent some of that, so I'm sure it's a little bit less. And that Monday, that there, the federal government wants um, the county to spend that money. So if we're running into a roadblock, we've got families who have already met that maximum allocation of six months or ten thousand dollars. And we can't help them further and we're not spending that money or the county's not spending that money. That's going to go up to the federal level and they're going to, they're going to have the, the realization, they're probably going to have to make programmatic changes. Uh, to those funds in order to get those spent down and provide those families the relief that they need. What I can say is that we, we have been working very closely with our federal lobbyists on some of these issues. So that they can be brought up to the appropriate uh, departments and um, and, and our voices can be heard. So I, well, do I think things will change? Um, I, I, I wouldn't make that statement. Um, but I will say that I, I hope that they do because I think that the need is there. Uh, to expand the existing programs and I, and I think that the federal government knows that.
Thank you, Mayor. I am, I'm okay with the three generic buckets that are being proposed to us, like anything else. The devil is in the, the details. So I look forward to the, you know, once the treasury guidance is finalized. And our consultant uh, approves a more specific list of projects, I look forward to um, debating those priorities. But until then, I'm okay with three generic buckets, but uh, let's see what specifics, you know, were presented to us down, down the road. Thank you.
Thank you, bro. For you.
Ready for the next one, right, man? Do you have any struggles, city attorney? Uh, item number two on the agenda. Uh, is our first, uh, and only quasi judicial hearing tonight. It's a resolution of the City Commission, the City of Deerfield Beach, Florida. Approving a major site plan application from A Broward County LLC to construct eleven thousand eight hundred sixty five square foot industrial warehouse. The Bezennean ancillary administrative offices at the property located at eighteen eleven Southwest Forty Second Way. Deerfield Beach, application number twenty dash I two zero seven. Uh, provided for conflict severability and effective date. I believe we have a representative of the applicant here today to speak. And sir, after stating your name and address, if you would just uh, state for the record, uh, whether you waive or not quasi judicial procedure. As you may know, you have a right to a more formal quasi judicial procedure, so you should choose across an exam and a waste witnesses, et cetera. So if you could just put on the record, let me wave or not. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor. Question, uh, from Coast Guard Department, thank you for the, for the project for A Alligators. I, I do waive the uh, question, uh, issue.
Thank you.
This project, uh.
I'm sorry, sir, can you please speak a little more to, towards the light? We're having a hard time here.
Yeah, uh, now this project uh, consists of a single tenant uh, industrial warehouse building. For a business they have purchased this land many years ago, the purchase of building uh, the headquarters. Is a set tank uh, uh, company, it's family owned, they started with pump truck. It take a lot of price to their business. Uh, so as you probably saw on the uh, application, uh, this building is state of the art. Uh, facility, uh, it will be uh, their administrative offices. Uh, and space for storing twelve uh, maximum uh, pump trucks. Uh, and space for storing twelve uh, maximum uh, pump trucks. At the present time, you only have eight, but it's prepared for future uh, uh, expansion. The way the business operates, uh, uh, these trucks uh, do not come to the site full. They are uh. Empty by the Broward County facility. Uh, besides the storage of the trucks on the rear of the property, there is also a truck wash, keep their trucks uh. Pristine condition is part of this uh, part of their business operation. So a couple of two sons uh. The, the way this site plan has been designed, uh, the office from the front uh, has mainly lazy. Facing the street, the double height of lobby and an open stair. And there are only three parking spaces in the front, two ninety gap and one extra one. Mostly the front, front of these actually, you know, escape and approach to the door. All of the red doors face aside, uh, he has spent all the criteria uh, from the RC. Architecture board, planning, so they have all of those as a general location, this is directly north of uh, incinerator. On a street that is mainly occupied by uh, very heavy industrial uses such as uh, construction demolition. We say, oh, he has thirty parking spaces, uh, they actually need uh, very few, the public was not business. Or through phone requests or internet. They'll have uh, truck drivers with names of trucks on site and pick up. Uh, maybe commercial vehicles and and presently, I have three or uh, people on the open step.
Yes, please.
When you're looking at this site plan, it's located on a one-point-twenty-five acre site on a dead-end street. Uh, on eighteen eleven Southwest Forty Second uh, way. Uh, he has two entrances, one from the old sack and one um, slightly away, allows the whole traffic circulation throughout. The fire truck uh, turnaround is provided at the very rear as well as the uh, uh, dumpster. In front of the overhead doors, we have uh, sixty feet of an overing area for the purpose of being able to enter the uh, uh, building. This slide shows the uh, an overing uh, of the uh, not only the fire trucks, but also the uh, the garbage trucks and the uh. Trucks to be able to. On the lower right-hand corner, be the east elevation, uh, you can see that it looks more of an office building. The middle brownish portion is pretty uh, uh, porcelain tile, very large tile. That protrudes outward from the facade. Building has the, uh, also a wraparound sign on the north elevation that the office area wraparound for. Then you can see the uh, the three double door doors that allow the truck to be stored. Another far right-hand of this north elevation, you see the covered uh, truck wash. Here's the uh, rendering, the only difference is that. Parking spaces that you see now in front of the building are no longer there. That would be a last speaker. Here's uh, if you showed the, how the uh, architectural detail protrudes out. And uh, how the design wraps around, there's a wing uh, also that extends five feet. To also uh, screen some of the overhead doors. Next. That's the last one. Do you have any, any questions? Yeah.
Thank you very much. Any comments, your questions? Make sure you do that.
Thank you. Uh, very nice to see you, by the way. Um, couple of questions. The first one is, where is their corporate headquarters now?
They, at the present time, they work from their home. Actually, they have a large joint foundation. But they uh, they lease uh, facility, I can order one facility, park and trucks. Uh, some of them are on stable ready for a very mild, except they're not covered by buildings, so they want to make sure they're uh, more protected.
That's wonderful. Moving here to Deerfield, how many employees do they have?
At the present time, they have uh, ten well employed.
Now, as far as the operations that will be done at this facility, it's the washing of the exterior of the trucks, not necessarily. Pumping out the trucks, is that correct?
Strictly the washing of the exterior of trucks that needed, and also there are no, no repairs or debate on this, so.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Grossman?
I just want to confirm with Mr. Power, you can shake your head and I can just reiterate for the, for the record here that two questions, one. That all staff comments have been complied with, and it's correct. That was a yes. And then the second one, um, there's no. Request for a variance, but I just want to confirm that there's no variance to stop with this application, correct? There are no variance to stop with that. Okay, thank you. That's all I have there. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone from the public who would like to come up and speak on this slide?
I'm sure, um, Farnes hit my button.
Commissioner Farnes, if you want to say something, or you just want to.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
I'm sorry, you have a motion from Commissioner Farnes, certified by Vice Mayor Preston, all in favor. Excuse me, uh. Uh, let's do all in favor.
Aye, aye.
As opposed.
Thank you. Have a great evening and uh, thanks for stopping. We're very well with us to go across.
Excellent. Good to hear. Thank you.
Hey, item number three on the agenda is in order to the City Commission of the City of Deerfield Beach, Florida, ending chapter ninety-eight Land Development Regulations. Article four supplemental regulations of the City of Deerfield Beach Land Development Code to create section ninety-eight dash one zero seven. Mobile food dispensing vehicles to authorize the use of mobile food dispensing vehicles. As a temporary accessory used in certain zoning districts and provide general standards for operating mobile food dispensing vehicles. Providing for conflicts, separability, codification and an effective date. Uh, this is second reading. Uh, I think I gave a brief summary uh during the first reading. I think I'm happy to. Answer any questions you may have. I think Mr. Power uh is available as well.
Uh, City Manager or Staff, do we have any comments we might, before we discuss this?
No, Mayor, as as was stated during the first reading, that this uh, this item is necessitated. By the state's change in law, which requires us to have regulations in place if we want to have any regulations at all. Regarding mobile food dispensers uh, or food trucks. So um, we um, we bring it before you for second reading and passage.
Thank you. If we could have a member of city staff go podium, make sure that the microphone is properly working before we. Uh, while we're waiting to do that, can we have uh, comments from the Commissioner Guardians? Commissioner Farnes, is your button pushed, Cruz?
Yes, it is.
Uh, my question is, it says here in certain districts. Does that mean some districts in the city will be prohibited? Now, this could not. Who makes that decision?
I can answer that one. Uh, it's not, I don't believe it's referring to commission districts. It's actually zoning districts. And uh, the way the words is currently drafted, it's it's limited to the uh, the the business, you know, commercial and industrial districts. Eric, can, I see Eric shaking his head and about, yes.
Which road residential? I'm thinking of things like Century Village, other giant condos that might enjoy in their parking lot. Or, let's, as I recall, as a younger man. When I worked for King Toyota, we always had a food truck full up. So that we could eat, let's be fair, get off the property for twelve hours. Uh, Mayor Power, my own terms. So, so to answer your question, you know, in a residential situation, a a special event permit could be had for, say, a block party or something like that. Okay, this, this ordinance essentially allows for a food truck to just be there by right, so we can't have a food truck to shut. Say, part of the residential property or beyond residential property. Um, that's, that's the intention. So if we be into the commercial industrial areas. Uh, but like if a um, partnership wanted to have a food truck, this would be an opportunity. Okay, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Power, just for clarity, along the same line, the reason you don't want to have it is, let's say you have any residential neighborhood, if anyone. At any time, you park your food truck there indefinitely and run a business essentially from the, from the front yard of residential neighborhood.
That's right.
So without this, that that would be a lack of.
Because they have.
If we didn't put this in place. Okay, thank you. I don't see any other commission comments, even from the public here to comment on this side. And of course, can we have uh, written items? We'll go with you first, sir.
Good evening. Chad Sheldon, one of mine, Southeast Thirteenth Street, District One. I moved to uh, Safara nearly fourteen years ago from Philadelphia. And in Center City, Philadelphia, these food trucks litter the streets all over the place. And none of these food trucks have restrooms. So these servers are in their hot trucks all day cooking food. And they're there all day and they don't leave to go use the restroom in the retail center or the office building in front of them. So they're not clean, they're filthy. And when they're done, they leave their trash there on the sidewalk and dump their ice or whatever, you know, a hot dog litter on the street, they're filthy. Uh, you're gonna have, you may have issues with other restaurants who pay business taxes, license taxes, real estate taxes. And rent. And now these food trucks can come in and take from their business, you're gonna have an issue with it. I know, I understand from first reading, the state says we can't prohibit it. Well, I'll, I'll recommend that you restrict this as much as you can because you're opening up, the state's opening up a can of worms here. And you're gonna be left with the fallout. They're filthy, they're noisy, and and they're not a great option. Yes, uh. Um, they're great for lunch trucks to pull in at the auto shops and the industrial yards. At lunchtime or breakfast for fifteen minutes and grab a sandwich and a drink, but after that, get the hell out of here. And and that's how they function, as you were talking about it at the dealership. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public here to comment on this side? And soon we leave online, we have to be to the rest of them. Go ahead, Number.
Mike Adams, one, one-four-three-one, Southwest Fifth Terrace, Deerfield Beach, Florida. Good evening and peace to all to you. So here we are at the second meeting of the third on this particular ordinance. I was hoping this city could keep and allow those on trying to, you know, for the food truck. Well, I see they are post, they are trying to talk to us, obviously, but now I'm not good at the trucks. But usually say that Deerfield Beach, I'm just not here, if the world's a bigger than the truck is. That might want to listen to this. Deerfield Beach has some outstanding features. And trying to show on the trucks. I'm not trying to put this back up. They develop in this highlight and give the grid of junkyards next to homes in this area. The Department of Government Development is trying, is trying to destroy all of this sound. See, we're in American danger. That is the so-called spot of this old ice project. This is the leadership here, where people want more approachable means. That's a discussion for another day. Anyone who knows visions can see this, which is all the non-functional trucks for the property owners that support them. The stolen access is not only for one, but it also for many, you know, a lot of time. I won't mix my words, never can, and never will. Myself and others will see that as sad for the dear people. Over the late people's thoughts, how do they approach? Finally, any commission on the road, it's a new experience. The violence is on the wrong side of the purpose.
Thank you. Katie Frightaug, yes, you can end up.
Katie Frightaug, four-eighteen Southeast Second Street, Deerfield Beach, Florida, three-three-four-four-one. I for one am all favor for the food trucks. Um, I know in certain districts, the food trucks have been operating on street corners on private property, not on public property, but on private property. And the ability for people to go and enjoy these food trucks during the pandemic has been incredible. To the point that one of these food trucks in particular, uh, one such organization that has done a lot for this city, has participated in many events for the city. Free of charge. Um, they are, they donate their time, they donate their food. They are now able to be a brick and mortar restaurant. They've been able to open a brick and mortar restaurant, and that's important. Being able to give them the ability to make the money on the street to become a brick and mortar restaurant is very important to the livelihood. Of many of these food truck owner operators. They are not trash people. They don't leave their shit everywhere. They don't do that. Maybe they do up in Philly, but they don't do that here in Deerfield. I've never seen an issue with any of them. And if they do, believe me, I would be the first one to call them out, but I never have seen an issue with any of them. So I really do appreciate the fact that we are moving forward with allowing them in the neighborhoods and into the cities. And again, on private property, it's whatever anybody wants to do with their own property, and I hope that the uh. City Commissioners will move forward with this project and make it so that they are respected and they are welcome in our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public here to comment on this side?
I think, pardon me, I think the speaker's comments are actually well taken, but. This has to be viewed in the backdrop of what we're up against. The state has told us that we cannot prohibit. Food trucks and we cannot impose upon them an additional tax or license. Um, upon them. So that's the backdrop. We're stuck with that based upon the state's. Uh, preemption in this particular area. So while I sympathize with the comments, we can't do what's being asked. So this before us is the next best thing, and like I said at first reading, this will probably take some tweaking, there'll be some trial and error. Um, and we're just gonna have to see how how it goes, but this is better than than nothing. For the reasons that the mayor and and my other colleagues mentioned at first reading, and that you don't want to have the Wild West out there, so to speak. So this is, this is where we are. I'll be voting in favor of it, but if we need to make tweaks along the way. Um, I suggest that the public and my colleagues um. Make those concerns known and we can change this at any, at any time, but this is a good first start.
Commissioner Farnes?
I believe in free enterprise. Next, the restaurant owners will say, no more restaurants in Deerfield because they're competition. When I go out to eat, it was sit-down restaurant. And I'm served by a waiter or waiters. The food is certainly different than what I'm gonna buy on a food truck. Now, I've been going to Little League games in the park. They have a little concession stand. God, they are competition. All the restaurants in Deerfield Beach. They serve hot dogs and hamburgers. They don't leave a mess. The only difference between them and a food truck is they don't have wheels. My first restaurant, I was in that business for a number of years, was a construction trailer on a Little League field. And it came with wheels. We didn't go anywhere, it stayed there. But we opened up weekends and we served the kids and the adult coaches, hot dogs and hamburgers. The Board of Health inspected us, and guess what? We cleaned up, didn't leave a mess. And they were very happy with us. Is room for everybody. To me, this is just, don't let another type of restaurant open up in Deerfield because we have too many restaurants as it is. They were not successful, they'll go out of business. Just like any other business. I support this because I see a need for it. I know there were many businesses where if it weren't for food trucks, the local employees really wouldn't have a chance to eat and have to schlep sandwiches from home. Instead of getting hot coffee and maybe a hero sandwich.
Instead of getting hot coffee and maybe a hero sandwich, an ice cream bar, or whatever else they wanted off a food truck. So I support it. And to the restaurant owners, if you can't stand the competition, go out of business. Because it should be open, anybody that wants to open a restaurant, put their money and their heart back behind it, knowing their restaurant business seven days a week work, good luck to them. They're serving the public. And as long as the public buys their food, they'll be in business. If it's not successful, they can't make a living, it won't last very long. We won't have to worry about it. But I agree with Commissioner Adroski. The state says we can't prohibit them. We can restrict them, we can keep a lid on it. But they should be given the opportunity to prove themselves an asset to Deerfield Beach.
Mr. Farnes, Vice President.
Thank you, Mayor. The comments made, uh, the front tag, um, was spot on. I agree with everything that she said. This is the city of Deerfield Beach. And, uh, experiences other places doesn't mean that it is the way that it's going to be here. There's no evidence that people leave the, the mess that has been alleged, um, and dirty up, uh, our city. That's just, just frivolous allegations with no proof. Then, secondly, um, Mr. Adams' comments that was read in by the clerk. He made some valid points that, uh, as I said before, we should have this in place for some measure of regulation. If you go through the backup, it talks about the regulations that are in place. The ability not to just set up any place that you want, which is good. That you can't be there all hours of the day, that's good. But the other thing that I'm concerned with, uh, that I share with the comments that were read in by the clerk is overregulation. Uh, and that could be a concern, but that's something I'm certainly gonna be watching. And I can see that, um, the comments of my colleague, they're gonna be watching as well. The people that are trying to make a living, we ought to do everything that we can to assist them, to help them. Uh, we, we are right now seeing, uh, a resurgence of this virus, which is affecting the income of a lot of people. And the city ought not be there to make it hard on those people, but be friendly. This is something that we will be watching and something that we will be looking at, but certainly the people that are trying to make a living, honestly, doing it the right way, should not be overregulated. We should do everything that we can to help them. During the pandemic, the first time, when I saw that so many businesses were suffering, I made it my business to go to each district and pick a restaurant and buy food to help out. Because I knew that it was a tough situation. And that's what we all need to do. As a community, we need to rally around, um, you know, um, the different businesses that are trying to make it, like these food trucks. Let's help them out. If there's a problem, like anything else, we're able to say we need to address whatever the situation is and have them comply. But there should not be the sense that we need to just really bear down on them right away or overregulate simply because of, of the name food truck. So, um, this is actually a good thing.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Um, I, I think we're also confusing the difference. There's a difference between what we call a lunch wagon and a food truck. A lunch wagon doesn't prepare food on, it comes with pre-prepared food. So if I'm going to your Toyota dealership that you worked at, or Model T, whatever it was back in the day, I'm missing if you're paying attention to me, that's all. It's teasing. Um, there's a difference between a food truck and, uh, a lunch wagon. Description that we have here in front of us, I believe, kind of separates the two. Says it is any vehicle that is a public food service establishment that is self-propelled or otherwise movable from place to place and includes self-contained utilities, including but not limited to gas, water, electricity, or the place disposal. Am I interpreting, interpreting this correctly?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay, so a food truck that shows up, says hey, I've got sandwiches, I got all this other goodies to sell you while you're working hard there, is different between, uh, difference between someone who is sitting there actually cooking food to the customers. There's, there's a difference. This does not touch the lunch wagons. This only touches the food trucks. So the problem that I have, and, and I would like to ask my colleagues who are, who don't support this, is to tell me wherein here is the overregulation. What could you strike if there is overregulation on this? Because, um, what I see is our ability to put in some rules and regulations that we need to have in place, because if not, it will be the wild west. You will have people putting a food truck, and imagine you're in a residential neighborhood, you're at home, and you're in a block. Let's say it's Cove, let's say it's over in, uh, District 2, District 3, District 4, any primary residential street in there. And you've got four or five houses that have food trucks in front of them that are cooking food right there next to residential home and running a business. That means that anyone from the general public can stop and go to that house and buy food. Think about what that does to an area. And then tell me how we should not regulate people away from that. Um, I love food trucks. I said it before, I'll say it again, you don't get to be this size without being banned from food trucks. But they're great, and we have some outstanding ones in the city. They're homegrown businesses from, in the city of Deerfield Beach. Uh, so, so I agree with all of that, but I think we have to have something in place. Now, if you want to change it where it's allowed in different zoning, based on how far away it is from other holes, other rules and regulations, a good point against not doing anything, or, or I should say, uh, yeah, against not doing anything, is the fact that where are the toilet press for somebody that's working in a food truck? What happens? That's a great point, never thought of that. Um, so, you know, we need to have something in place. I think as Mr. Adroski said, this is a good start. Um, if there's something in here that you feel should be changed or removed, I would suggest bringing that up and try to bring it up now or come back and do an amendment to this later on down the road. But for right now, I think we've got a good baseline, uh, to move forward with this.
Mayor, I agree. You asked the question, uh, any of your colleagues that, where is the overregulation? I didn't say that it was overrated, what I said was the concern would be that this may open the door, because it does, since it states here about having some regulations. Uh, so I'm not saying that they're overrated. Well, and the, uh, uh, and what we're putting in place is good, and I agree with them.
Okay, I was gonna say, I, I don't see, if it's not overregulated, anything we have right here, I don't see where it would open the door for further overregulation in the future. Anything, I see this being changed to adapt, to try and allow them in areas that, you know, we, we may need some creativity where they can be allowed. But I don't see this as overregulation at all. Um, so I, 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 I agree with this and I would fully support this move forward.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion, um, Mr. Adroski, second by Mr. Farnes. Um, we'll call, please.
Commissioner Adroski?
Yes.
Commissioner Adroski?
Yes.
Commissioner Farnes?
Yes.
Ask him a question?
Yes.
You have the next.
Yes.
We're now at the public comment portion of tonight's meeting. Persons addressed in the commission shall state his or her name and address and may speak for three minutes unless extended for one additional minute by the mayor. Uh, this is the public comment portion for items that are not on the, tonight's agenda. If you have a public comment about an item, uh, an agenda item, the time to raise that is during the public comment portion after that agenda item is read into the record. As a reminder, no comment shall be made related to the personal life or personal qualities of any person, and no language which would offend persons' ordinary sensibilities shall be permitted.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Hey. Mayor and Commissioners, my name is Thomas Noah. I live at 406 Southeast 8th Avenue. Um, I'm here concerning the flooding on 8th Avenue. I came before you at the, um, stormwater initiation meeting, whatever we call that, the big plan that we were putting together. That meeting, because we had recently flooded, we flooded November 8th, 2020, about 12 o'clock in the evening on, on Southeast 8th Avenue. Um, we had eight residents on Southeast 8th Avenue, had roughly about between eighty and a hundred thousand dollars worth of damage in the residence. For all of you that may seem like nothing because we have flood insurance, one thing to tell you that flood insurance doesn't cover is a place to stay, your mortgage, and other things that you lost that are valuable to your family. Um, I'm here again because the city has been moving forward with the direction of the commission and the city manager are doing things in our district that I can't say they're not. I know that we're trying. But again, on July 24th, for a thirty-minute rainstorm, our street flooded again. We were within inches of having water in our homes and having the same catastrophic damage to our homes again. So I'm here to you, to present you these pictures, to show you that there's no lie. There's a copy of the tide charts to show you that it was low tide. The answer from our, uh, engineer was that, well, it's a gravity fed system, it was high tide the night we flooded, and it was a fifty-year flood. It had rained thirty inches in thirty days. That was the answer that we received initially. Well, let me tell you that we just had two fifty-year floods in Deerfield. Must be a miracle. So I'm here again to ask the commission, I'm representing my street, my family, the people that live in Deerfield. I understand streets flood in Deerfield. But when somebody has to drive down a flooded street and it doesn't affect someone's livelihood, I'm sorry, that's not catastrophic flooding. Catastrophic flooding is when it floods people's homes and it ruins their livelihoods. Okay? Try living with a one-year-old, a wife, and not your home for roughly three months. Because you can't do it, you can't afford it. You can't afford to live in your home, pay your mortgage, and do all those things. If you don't have flood insurance in South Florida, get flood insurance. But I'm here to ask for your help. Not, enough is not being done on our street. We're here today to present these pictures. One of the pictures that I started off with is the fire hydrant. That fire hydrant has a foot of water on it. Okay? If you move to the map, on the map, I drew a blue line. That blue line is Southeast 4th Street, all the way from on 8th Avenue from about 5th North. That is the lowest part of our entire district over in that area. The stormwater guys have come out, they're phenomenal. David Cook's crew, phenomenal. The response we get from the guys to come out sweep the drains, phenomenal. But that is not enough. These drains cannot handle the amount of water that's being funneled into this area. So I know that it costs a lot of money.
It's like, no, I'm not.
Please, sir. Um, I know it costs a lot of money to dig up streets and put bigger drains in, but what we have there is not working. I know that they've sleeved the pipes behind the home. If you look at the picture from behind the home, that's the drain in the back of my house with that fence around it. They came out, they assisted me getting roots out of it after the first flood, and here we are again. Even though we sleeved that pipe, we still have over two feet of water sitting on top of that drain. Okay, um, I received the call from my wife at, when I was at work at about 2:45. I immediately reached out to my contact, I contacted nature, the city manager, and I said, we're, it's gonna flood, we need to get crews out if we can. He said, absolutely, dispatch crews immediately. They were sweeping the drain. The drains were not clogged, drains were not covered. So this is an issue. Um, I'm here to ask for your help. Um, and I, I'd like your support, and I thank you for all that you have done and are continuing to do for our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, I, when Clark read your hand up? When you need to unmute yourself?
Yes, I did, Mayor. Good evening, uh, Mayor. When Clark Reed, 1430 Southwest 6th Way, Deerfield Beach. Uh, Mayor, on, at the June 22nd meeting, um, when we first spoke about this American Rescue Plan, I asked the question as to when the public would be able to comment, and I was told to wait, you had nothing, um, available at that time, that you were working on things. Well, now tonight, we've heard something. When will the public be able to comment on this?
Do you have an answer for it? Is that it?
Yes, that's it.
Okay, thank you. It's Friday time. Katie, you need to unmute yourself, please.
Katie Frightaug, 418 Southeast 2nd Street. Um, I also was asking the same question regarding, uh, the Guanlin's, uh, same message. When will the public have a, uh, input? And I know the answer to my question is probably not, but my question regarding that input would be, would any of the funds be able to be delegated to the fire station and police stations that need to have all of the repairs completed? Um, it's important to keep our guys safe, our firemen and our police officers safe from mold and everything else that's growing in these stations. So I'm wondering if any of the funds from those, from that project can be delegated to those. Um, also, and I know this is just me, and it's my little pet peeve, but do we have any update from the people that are building the supposed brewery in the Cove Shopping Center? Um, it looks horrible. I understand they took away our, our dry, our parking spaces, they took away the sidewalk and put up green tarp that barely lasts two months and it looks terrible. Um, if there's anything that we can do or find out what the status is on that, um, are they moving forward with it? If not, can they at least clean up the building to make it safe again for people to be able to use the sidewalks? Will they put the sidewalks back in? Um, so if I could get a, an update on that, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Sue, you have some lines or anyone else here would like to comment?
Mayor, Commissioners, your manager, it's me, Attorney. My name is Maggie Nolan, 325 Southeast 3rd Terrace, Deerfield Beach, Florida. The reason I'm here tonight is we all know pandemic is hitting us again. And I would just like you to keep it in your minds about businesses that we allow to have tents outside because they're taking, they've taken, taken out. And I understood that, because everything was, you know, moving along and everybody thought everything was gonna be safe. But it's happened again. And it was a tremendous savings of these businesses when we allow down to have outside seating in tents over in the Cove area, and I'm sure there was other parts of the city that was also allowed to do this. So can we keep it in our minds that maybe this is something that you're gonna need to be brought back in the near future? I thank you.
Thank you.
And how's Mike, I'm gonna ask Mike here, um, the Dax over in the, so, um, I am.
Time to ask for, uh, the, for all of the issues that we've talked about.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I'll be safe.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the public who would like to comment?
Hi, how are you?
Hi.
Thank you, first of all.
I'm sorry, your name is?
Julie Murr, 500 Southeast 8th Ave. Um, I want to say thank you for working on this flooding issue. Um, it's been very traumatic, I've had to send. We just moved in last year and it just keeps flooding. Um, and I just want to say thank you so much for working on it. It's just very hard to deal with every time it rains and then heavy rains for an hour, our block is like a river, so. And cars go through it and it pushes all the rain up into the houses, so it's just so traumatic. We need to keep working on it.
Yes, thank you.
Chad Sheldon, 109 Southeast 13th Street. In the July 20th commission meeting, I spoke on the power was granted to the city government. We are a municipality and the mayor, commissioners, and city managers should operate it as such. I pointed out that the Surfside pound of building collapsed, which ran by the state and county from start to finish. In fact, the city's expert structural engineer has still not been allowed onto the property to inspect what remains. The city has been kicked out of the loop. Commissioner Adroski and city manager Santucci have proposed creating a new position for a director of public city safety for just such an event. They also cite the need to have a highly trained city employee to come in and coordinate between six different city departments because those departments are not communicating as they should. Commissioner Adroski, you said that it was nobody's fault. Oh, contraire. Oh, contraire, Commissioner. I can lay fault at each of the six department heads, who are each pulling down close to $100,000 per year. I can lay fault at the city manager's seat, pulling down 220,000 a year. I can lay fault with the two assistant city managers, who pull down salaries of 130,000 a year and $150,000 a year, plus all the benefits and pensions. We have many people employed by the city who are incapable or inept, and we pay them lots of money. Fire their asses, stop giving everyone a pass. Don't hire more people to make up for the incompetence and failures of the people we are already overpaying. Commissioner Drosky, you said in night one of the budget meeting, public safety is what we do as elected officials. And don't kid yourself for a second, you think these duties are already being done. You say it's nobody's fault. Nonsense. Commissioner Parnas, you emphatically stated in night one of the budget meeting, give them whatever they want when it came to the department's needs to hire more people and buy whatever they want for the 2022 budget. I guess that's an easy attitude to have when it's not your money. You all forget, this is our money. Commissioner Parnas pays $600 a year in real estate taxes. City manager pays none, he doesn't live in the city, it's our money, stop throwing it around like it's monopoly money. You're all up here looking at the 2022 budget with an open checkbook, that's wrong. That's not what the stakeholders expect or want, and it's not how we operate our household finances or our business finances. How about you tell all the departments to cut their spending by 15% or 20%? Try that for a change, and stop competing with other municipalities on what one has or does over the other. Let's try to be efficient and cut costs. Cut these outrageous salaries, benefits, and pensions to the level of a citizen or the property owner who pays the real estate taxes.
Uh, Mayor, you had two concerns in night one of the budget meeting, to quote my ear, one with the beach, uh, I complained about the, uh, the beach and the laboratory facilities and the fishing pier.
Maybe a minute, yeah.
Uh, three years ago, to Commissioner Hudek, and I sat in his office and I showed him all sorts of pictures, and he investigated it, and we see what happened with the laboratories, nothing happened with the fishing pier, uh, as you noted. Um, you also would like a beach ambassador. Uh, suggestion may be the person sitting at the entrance to the fishing pier make it out of visitor's center. You wanna be able to tell people where to buy bait, where to do this, where to eat. To have someone sitting there, you're paying someone, let that be visitor's center. Uh, and I, I, uh, as far as the beach and, and the mess down there, you know, maybe it's time to start looking into beach tax. Uh, I know a number of people that come down here on the weekends from Delray Beach. Uh, they don't pay taxes here, this isn't their beach, stay at your beach. I don't go to the beach, because I can never get a parking spot. Um, that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public? Can I close it to the public? I don't see if there's anyone on line anyone right then? Yeah, okay, I'm gonna close it to the public. Um, get some answers on some of this. Uh, Mr. Old, like, you know, uh, I don't know what you call it, 1:30 in the morning, last time we had this, I believe it was pressed to get the peak of the fire, uh, fire hydrant at that time. Um, it is an absolute priority, and, and it's clear that it's not maintenance, it is a structural issue that needs to be repaired immediately, and I can't emphasize enough. You look at these pictures, for the public, you can't see them, they're stunning. And this is not the first time, and it's not gonna be the last time. It needs to be addressed as soon as possible. Um, and if that pump station is working to be able to handle this, then we know that we have a problem that, that needs to be addressed, we know it's being prioritized, we're talking about it, but we need to do everything we can to certainly take, uh, get that taken care of. I haven't asked the city manager for an answer as far as when we will have a public hearing regarding federal dollars. Um, do you manage, can you comment on that, about the ARPA money?
Sure, I mean, when we bring this forward, we bring the projects forward, uh, Mayor, uh, once we get the final treasury guidance and to bring this forward to the city commission to discuss these items, I I would be happy to hear the public comment during, during the reading of that item.
Do you know when that?
At, at this point, again, we're still waiting on the treasury guidance, um, once we're, we're able to digest that and, and then have the, um, a, a final look over of the recommended projects. Um, i- if that happens this month, I would suspect that we would be able to bring the projects forward to the city commission, uh, either the, either in the latter part of September or probably October at the latest, would be my, would be my, my guess at this point.
Okay. With, with that answer, it sounds like we're still a little ways out for considering that money, and I know we have other money, other sort of funding. And in the short, very short time, I'm gonna ask, whenever we get any kind of rain, we make sure we have a pump truck on this block immediately to address any issues that they have. Try to give some relief to make sure this doesn't happen. I don't care how many, uh, pump trucks we got to get out there or anywhere, I, I, it's my opinion that we should be doing that right away. Um, to address, uh, Ms. Frytag, uh, you answered part of your question. I do know that the brewery in the Cove, uh, is in for permitting. I have requested that we try to open up sidewalk, Mr. Power, I believe you've had discussions with them to get the sidewalk opened up, at least on the one side.
That is correct, uh, I've asked for the property, they are able to build the sidewalk along the, um, west side, the area of the perimeter. And, uh, they recently, uh, received their, their building burned back on 7th and 4th. Um, it's just recently, next week, they have intentions to start construction.
Okay, in September?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, as far as, uh, for Mayor Nolan with the outdoor seating, um, it is something that we should consider when it happens. The, the problem is if we do it now without an emergency order, there's a limited capacity, all you're doing is adding capacity, so if the idea is to keep people separated, you're just packing more people in, so, um, and, and we all love the outdoor seating as well, but it's, it's obviously becomes a private property, public property issue for us. Um, and we are gonna try and everything we can to, to, as much as possible. Um, to correct, um, the one statement that was made as far as the assistant city manager, we are currently at one assistant city manager in City Deerfield Beach. Um, and we have seen, as far as coming in and saying, cut 15%, 20%, I've been here long enough to see where we've done that. About bottom of the housing market fell out, actually Mayor Nolan, at the time, myself sitting up here, we had that, we had to make some harsh decisions, which people were laid off, and we cut a tremendous amount. We had to cut just recently a tremendous amount again when we were faced with the pandemic and the loss of revenues that we needed from the state. You see some of the issues that we have when we make those types of cuts. You can see it across the city, the complaints we're getting now, as the pandemic opens up, are about issues that were cut from funding during the, the pandemic, because we had to do that. Now, there are some things that we're falling down on, without a doubt, we addressed this with staff. I've made it very clear in the city manager about my feelings on that, so I'm, I'm not gonna chalk it all up to that, but to, to make a blind cut of 15% to 20%, I've been here long enough to see that, now a few times, it doesn't work very well. And, uh, if, if you're, if you've got some suggestions on some other cuts, rather than saying a 15% to 20% across the board, that just doesn't work. Um, I think, and thank you for all the other suggestions, everybody who came out here tonight in the rainstorm. So, thank you. Uh, Vice Mayor, I think you mentioned him, right?
Yes, I did. Um, I also want to say about the relation to the cuts, is that when people are employed, um, their salary is considered, and you will not find that the singer Beerfield Beach is somehow, um, you know, out on the island by themselves, but just throwing away people's money, the people's money, because it is people's money, but but you have to also look at what the market is there. What, what would they pay? And we try to recruit the best people that we can, so for whatever dollars that we do pay them, we actually get a good return on those dollars. Um, and I believe that, to be fair, we have some very, uh, good people that work for the city of Beerfield Beach, and they do a good job in trying to make sure that this city is progressive and that the residents come first, and that's a concern of mine. But one thing the gentleman said about, uh, the beach and the parking, he says he doesn't even go to the beach anymore because he can't find a parking spot, that's a problem. That's a problem, and we need to really look at that, because if the citizens of Deerfield Beach, its residents, its taxpayer are not enjoying what the city has to offer, what good does it do for us to celebrate, say that we got such a great beach, and we got this, and we got everybody else coming from all over the place, and everybody can enjoy our beach except the residents? That's a problem. And that's something that we need to look into, um, make sure that every opportunity for the residents, the taxpayer, the people that make this work for our city, is given the opportunity to enjoy whatever it is that the city has to offer. That bothers me when he says that, because it sounded like he, I don't go to the beach anymore. Maybe that sounds like he's giving up, that can't happen. And what I wonder is what percentile of the resident does that opinion, opinion represent? And whatever that percentile, even if it's 2%, 3%, is 3% too much. So we need to do what we can to make this city accommodating to the residents of Deerfield Beach.
Make sure I do that?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, first of all, for someone in the public to, to, um, pat down our city staff, I have a problem that I work with these individuals all the time, and I have the utmost respect for them. Uh, they have the city's best intentions, uh, on their mind every single day that they're working for our city and for our residents. So, um, I'm sorry, but you're out of line, that's incorrect.
I'm not out of line, that's my.
Excuse me, excuse me, you don't get to do our first, you've got your chance to speak.
Thank you. With regards to parking at the beach, yeah, I mean, we can't have a parking space for every resident, but we do have beach passes um, that are specifically designated for residents, they can purchase. So if someone from Delray can't purchase a Deerfield Beach beach pass, so there are certain parking spaces that are, um, designated for just Deerfield Beach residents, so that does help. Um, you know, we can't have a park, you don't have 80,000 parking spaces down there, we'd love to, but unfortunately, we don't. The, the, the question, um, that Mrs. Lur brought up, or the statement that she brought up, is as a lot of you know, my house is probably six inches higher than theirs, so when theirs floods or mine gets real close, or floods as well. Um, but one of the challenges that she had mentioned is, is very true, and those are vehicles that drive through these flooded areas and the wakes go into the homes. I don't know if there's a way that if we do have a flooded street, we can put barriers up there to stop vehicles from going down these streets. Um, because that, you know, if, if the initial rainfall doesn't get to your house, when these trucks go through these wakes, it just, it, it, it invades your home as well, so. I don't know if there's anything that we've done, a temporary barrier. Um, but i- it's something I'd like staff to at least look into, so that we, you know, I, I don't know, I'm just trying to look at solutions. Um, you know, until we get a, as, as a best case solution with regards to stormwater. Katie had brought up a good point with regards to fire and police stations and using this funding for that. I don't know the answer to that either. Um, but I'd love to know if, if, if that is an opportunity, because I agree, um, these individuals, you know, they protect us, they protect our homes, uh, they protect our, uh, our, our property, and whatever we can do to, you know, protect them and the fire stations, police stations, I'm sure we're looking into, thank you.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Parnas.
I'm glad a member of the public, into the property, raised it, to find out what I pay in taxes. I live in a modest apartment, I'm not ashamed of it. If I could afford a $300,000 home, I'd pay more real estate taxes, but I don't. I'm retired. I live in an apartment in Century Village, I'm not ashamed of it. Whatever the taxes are, I would pay it. As far as giving money away, the only time I ever brought it up is when we had a issue about whether first responders should get free passes to the beach, uh, pier. And I said, I, I would consider that not enough. If we're gonna reward them, let's reward them. I don't think a free pass to the fishing pier is a big enough reward for anybody. Period. As far as the assistant manager, we only have one now. Period, not two, one. And I must say, Tom Good does a yeoman's jar, because when we had two people, he's picked it up without a raise, and is doing the job. So we're looking out after your dollars, whether you think so or not. Period. I try to watch every dollar this commission spends on anything because it's my job, because it's why I was elected. And it doesn't matter to me which of the four districts has got a problem, it's all our problem. This is our city, and I've been a part of it for over 30 years. And I'm proud to live here. And I'm not ashamed of how I live. I'm proud of how I live. I support veterans groups because I'm a veteran. I don't ask anything special for benefits because I was a veteran or that I spend time with the shift, with riding in the police car with our police, see what's going on in the city and what they do. I'm proud to do that because I see firsthand what they go through in a day by sitting in a police car for eight hours with them. I take this job very seriously, as do everybody up here. And I say to you, if you don't think we're doing a good job, you can always run for election. And if the vote is that you can do a better job, God bless you, you'll be elected. And if not, at least you took your best shot.
Thank you, uh, Commissioner Parnas. Um, I will say this, uh, we know the limited beach parking exists, we have that problem. We have a very liberal parking, uh, policy when it comes to our stickers. You're gonna, that, that's a common complaint if you wanna go to the beach frequently, I, you know, you might be parking way out of the way, but you usually find a spot, there sometimes you can't. But I think we have a pretty liberal parking sticker, uh, system, and you can't have both sides. You can't argue and criticize someone sitting up here because you're saying they don't pay enough taxes. But you want people who are coming from other areas who wanna spend that money at the beach, and you don't want them to be able to go to the beach, so. Um, the, the argument to me doesn't drive. Um, and I don't think anyone's, one of the nice things about running for office, anybody can run for office at City Deerfield Beach. This isn't, I pay a lot of taxes, therefore I should get my voice louder than everyone else's. It doesn't work that way, and it never should work that way. It's a really bad attitude to have, quite frankly. Uh, I think anyone who runs sits up here, regardless. How long have you been in the city, Commissioner Parnas?
Since 1989.
1989, that's a lot of money put into the, uh, economy here in City Deerfield Beach. You don't have to pay a lot in taxes, sometimes you just make smart business moves where you don't have to pay a lot. I lived here for a long time, I sold my house, I sold it high, that's what you do. People do that. Attacking staff because you have different philosophy, whether they should live in the city. I understand that, and that it's a difference of philosophies, and that's okay. I completely disagree. We pay them a lot of money. I take pride in my job, I don't necessarily use the products that I, my company sells, but I take a lot of pride in my job, I get paid money to do the job, and I do a good job for a reason. That's what they should be doing. To say that, well, because you're getting paid a lot of money, but you don't live in the city, you can't do the job, is just wrong. One, it limits your talent pool. Two, if, if I'm gonna be made, if I'm qualified and the ability to be the president of Kotex, just because I don't use the product doesn't mean I can't do the job. It's about taking pride in your work and doing a good job, that's the way I look at it. So I have a very different philosophy on that. Um, but I don't think it's right to attack staff and say that, you know, you have a criticism of staff, of the job they're doing, I understand that, to say because they don't live in the city, they don't care. My experience has been that is not the case, certainly not the city manager, not right now. Um, so, so I, I disagree with that. Um, guess next time. Okay, we are now at the consent portion of tonight's agenda, that's items four through six. Uh, Mayor Commissioners, the pleasure of the. Is there anyone who would like to come on, comment on item either four, five, or six? Is there anyone who would like to come on, comment on item either four, five, or six? Yes, which number would you like to talk on?
You can open up public discussion again before we go to these items, just so I can have a rebuttal for some of these.
No, if you want to send an email, you can. You've had your chance to speak.
So this is a one-way street, fellas?
No, it's a two-way.
There's no debate. There's no debate.
This isn't a debate. This is a business.
It should be a debate. All your opinions, nobody else's.
It is your opinion. You shared yours, you sound like ours. Welcome to the city. I'm sorry about that. Um, items four, five, or six, move to the public here to comment on the item. Okay, I'm gonna close it to the public now on items four, five, or six. I'll see if we online, maybe maybe that wrote it. Okay, we're closing to the public. Commissioner, do we have any pulls for item four, five, or six? No? Okay. Motion for all three.
Motion group, second.
You have a motion, in second. Uh, we have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Druski?
Yes.
Commissioner Hugath?
Yes.
Commissioner Partes?
Yes.
Ms. McCallister?
Yes.
Ms. McCallister?
Yes.
Item number seven is a resolution of the City Commission of the State of Deerfield Beach, Florida, approved a submission of an integrated water resource plan grant application to Broward County for the installation of a twelve-inch reclaimed water main in connection with Southwest Tenth Street Connector project and providing effective dates.
Mayor, if you'd like to.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, this, I don't want to just first recognize that this is an addendum and we do try not to put many of these on, although we do have two on for this evening. Um, this one really was a matter of timing and in my opinion presents a tremendous opportunity uh, for the city. Um, what this is, is a grant application to Broward County to install a twelve-inch reclaimed water main uh, in connection with the Southwest Tenth Street Connector project. Uh, this grant would be a fifty percent matching grant. The total estimated construction cost to run a reclaimed water uh, main down uh, Southwest Tenth Street is approximately five point eight million dollars. So we're seeking uh, half of that from the county. Now, obviously with the construction of the Southwest Tenth Street, the opportunity to get this line in is really just the timing is perfect for us and would allow us to provide a great spine system of reclaimed water uh, for the city of Deerfield Beach. And what reclaimed water is, is otherwise referred to as purple pipe. It is non-podable water that is uh, typically used in irrigation. And our ability to expand upon a reclaimed water system uh, now and into the future, I, in my opinion, is going to be very important to the city from a water conservation perspective. Now, I did say that this would be a fifty percent grant from the county. I think there is also, and although I can't look directly, I'm looking directly at some of these commissioners who have been very um, persuasive with FDOT. I think this is a tremendous opportunity to collectively work with FDOT and perhaps our state legislatures on the matching portion of this. I will be that bold to say that publicly. That um, this is um, I think something that we really should pursue um, to see if we can get the rest of the funding from, from other sources. Uh, because they typically do like to see when you are joining forces with a, with another granting agency. In this case, if we're awarded the county. Um, but at this point, there is no obligation on the city. This is just to pursue the grant. And we'll, we'll certainly be back to the commission to talk more or bring this back if, if we are uh, awarded the grant.
Oh, I, I completely support this. David, is this our first, uh, will this be your first non-podable water project?
I, I believe, I believe it is, Mayor, and I know that I have uh, Mr. Good there as well, if he could confirm that. But I believe that this would be our first opportunity for non-podable water system in, in the city.
Yeah, no, I, I think that's great. It's a good opportunity for us to see other cities to do that. Um, and, and I'm, I'm glad we're able to do this and I think we're gonna need it over there. So I, I think this is a good opportunity. So I certainly support it. Commissioner Druski?
I don't want to vote.
Overtated with time.
Uh, I, I'm in favor of this as well, uh, that anytime we have an opportunity to pursue a grant, that is, you know, time well spent. I, I just raised my hand to speak that I don't want this yes vote tonight to be seen as a tacit um, approval of the Tenth Street project as a whole. Uh, because I certainly have many more issues uh, with that uh, as we go forward, but I don't want the two to be confused at all. And I'm just making it clear today.
Thank you. Vice President, Commissioner Partes?
Yeah, I have, I have a question about this. We, we're talking about a new pipe that'll go underneath Tenth Street?
Commissioner Partes? No, Commissioner Partes, this would be the installation of a pipe during the construction of the Tenth Street Connector project. It would be in conjunction with the construction that will be happening.
So it's not going to be now, it's when, if and when they ever do it, that this project will go forward?
Yes, we would do that in conjunction with the construction of that, that connector as that would be the most opportune time to do it.
Thank you.
Is there anyone from the public who'd like to comment on this side? Closing to the public, then. Commissioner?
Motion to approve.
Motion for Commissioner Partes?
Second.
Um, roll call, please.
Commissioner Druski?
Didn't expect, need to second that, so, yes.
Commissioner Hugath?
Yes.
Commissioner Partes?
Yes.
Ms. McCallister?
Yes.
Mayor Gans?
Yes.
Item number eight is an ordinance to the City Commission of the City of Deerfield Beach, Florida, amending chapter sixty-six, traffic and vehicles of the city code of ordinances in article two, stopping standing parking, and article three, towing of unauthorized vehicles from private property to provide consistency with state law, providing for conflict, separability, codification, and an effective date. Uh, this was tabled from the prior meeting, so this is first reading uh, this ordinance. Uh, I did give a, a summary of the ordinance uh, at the prior meeting and available if you have any questions, as I know other staff are.
And uh, Mayor, if I may have uh, staff provide a summary and background on this item once again?
Sure.
Thank you. If I could have uh, Mr., Mr. Power uh, address this item?
Thank you, Eric Power, Fire and Services. Um, a- 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 as Anthony said, this, this item is to meet the requirements of county and state law that um, are required for us to amend our ordinances for. Uh, we have made some changes um, related to mileage, uh, distance um, that you can bring uh, your vehicle to as an impound lot. I think this is the part of computing, um, you know, it is, it is the impound lot. This is a discussion of business towing company might have an office. That's, that's not, you know, in reference, it's the impound lot itself that you're being towed to. Um, so the recommended change is to go from uh, five miles to ten miles. In reference to that, uh, we also are removing the uh, you can see the map here that was provided uh, today to the commissions. Uh, these are all the locations within a five and ten mile radius. The inner circle is a five mile radius, the outer circle a ten mile radius of the boundary of the city of Deerfield Beach. And so circles, those are all actual uh, impound lots that have received, you know, legal business tax receipt within the area. Um, so, uh, with, with staff would realize and realize uh, that meeting the uh, requirements of state statutes that, you know, the reality is, there's not a lot of opportunities for uh, property owners who want to go under contract with a towing company to actually meet the requirements of the code. And as the code actually reads, it's, it's from the point of towing. It's not from the boundary of the city and that can't obviously create part of towing for any place in the city, which is the boundary line. But as you can see from this point, you know, there are, there are some within a few miles, there are more as you get further out. And, and really the problem is to, you know, go ten miles from the point of towing, which means the state's there.
Uh, Eric, I have a question for you. Looking at this map and because this radius is limited, I, I, I don't see the top part, very bottom part. It looks like, yeah, it looks like we're going from eleven options in the five mile radius to sixteen options. Is that correct?
I'm in. I didn't see this.
No, actually it looks like we're adding more than, sorry, nineteen. That's what happens at the end of that, and it cuts off. So, so the ten mile radius would actually put it all the way down to Oakland Park?
Ten miles, put it as far south of the park now. The point of that though is that, that is the radius from the southern boundary. So if, you know, we were looking, if you got towed from City Hall today, you know, that would not make the requirement because it's from the point of tow. By the way, you promised me.
Okay.
Uh, but that, that's, that's the intention then. So yes, the, the point was that um, there are two impound lots in the city of Deerfield Beach currently. Um, there are fourteen properties in the five mile boundary and there are eight additional properties within the ten mile boundary.
There's fourteen, you said, internally?
Within the five mile boundary, fourteen, okay.
Thoughts are hard to see. All right, excellent. Thank you. So then we layer and out each other. Uh, Commissioner, do that?
Thank you. I actually have a question for the chief. Um, about a year, year and a half ago, and the only reason I'm bringing this up is because of the private property challenge. Uh, we had an issue with District One where an individual parked their veh- their vehicle in the property of another resident. And we were not allowed to tow that vehicle. Does this address that in any way? Yes, sir.
So, um, Commissioner, the issue with parking on any private property, it's always a private property owner's responsibility to get rid of property. So um, it wouldn't be a law enforcement function to take that off the property. If the city, uh, Anthony can speak for this, if the city wants to make a provision, the city is, is going to do that. That's something separate. The city would have a separate contract. But as far as law enforcement, removing a vehicle off private property, that one.
Right. And then the challenge with when the resident contacted the towing company was that they're not allowed to take it off of private property unless BSO says so.
Correct. The tow, the tow companies are probably more unwilling to do it than unable to do it because.
Commissioner Hugath? Wh- when it comes to private property as it relates to um, individual residencies is, is very different.
Yes.
It's different than what we're talking about here.
Yeah, the, the private residence is treated very differently from the other areas. I don't understand.
Commissioner Partes? Chief, don't go anywhere, please. I have a question for you.
Yes, Commissioner.
In the past, I was told, in fact, your former chief, that an illegal vehicle such as expired plates, a car is parked on my property, I could remove it because it's illegal. And I don't know who the owner is, but it's on my property. I could have it towed off. Provided it was illegal, being that it had um, plates that were expired, let's say, eight months ago, not a week, but eight months ago. Um, I, I know of such a case where the car was towed and there were no repercussions. Is that within the law?
At a certain point, the vehicle become abandoned. Uh, so it'll be abandoned property that we would recover. So in the case of an unregistered motor vehicle that's sitting there, we, we've seen them in places where they're sometimes even more than a year, some vehicles have been sitting around. They don't, and you know, the tires are flat and everything like that. Absolutely. That's a different kind of scenario. But if somebody comes over to another person's house and just parks in their driveway, there's strict limitations on what law enforcement can do in those situations.
But the law, law enforcement didn't come and tow the car.
Oh, no, privately, privately, you always, privately on private property, that's always going to be between the private uh, individual or entity and the tow company. And, and tow companies will vary. Some of them are willing to incur uh, certain liabilities, others will not. Um, but in all cases, if there's something there, I would recommend that you call law enforcement anyway because we will quickly determine whether the car is stolen or if it's wanted and used for crime or something like that. So.
Thank you, Chief. I, I want to keep the conversation in with.
Sure, absolutely. Thank you.
Any other comments from the commission? Want to go to the public, public? Do you want the public here to comment on this side? Zoom and written in that part. I don't, I no longer see her on. Unless it's just Brian. Okay. And it's your name and address for the record, please.
Yeah, and Commissioner Brian Mayo, twelve thirty-five Southwest Forty-Six Terrace. The, the problem with changing the mileage from ten or five to ten is depending on where you're at in the city or the time of day you're having to go get your car, is going to be a difference of, you know, ten or fifteen minutes to up to an hour, especially some of the residents, as you pointed out, Mayor Gans, is going to be down in Oakland Park. Traffic is hectic. Coming from the west side of the city, if you're on Southwest Tenth Street, it can take you more than thirty minutes to get from the sawgrass, just a power line road, and then navigate everywhere that you need to go from there. If, if you've already had a punishment of having your vehicle towed, the inconvenience of having to go and get it, and now pay for it, don't punish us even further by expanding it. And all we're really gaining is what? Another four companies in the, in the addition of the extra five miles. In the last meeting, Mr. Si- uh, Mr. Soroka said, yes, we can be more stringent. I implore the commission, keep it down at the five. We're not adding that many people or that many companies into this that it really has any bearing. Five miles is good enough if it's, if that's all we're adding. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? So you made it on some of the poses to the public. Um, I will say this, I, I, I think, you know, when it comes to towing, yes, it's a deterrent. And people that are legally towing, if that's something wrong, it should happen. As someone pointed out, to me, human moments happen, but there are also people that abuse the system. I know that's been going on. It's meant to be a deterrent. It should not be cruel and unusual uh, punishment. And I think the ten-year radius, or the ten-mile radius is from point of towing, but is it also how a crow flies? Is that correct?
Yes, that's true.
Okay, so how a crow is going to fly is a lot different than how someone's going to Uber or take a car to get to that location. So we do get beyond deterrent to get it to cruel and unusual, in my opinion. Um, I think all of this should stay. I would like to see this changed or have us go uh, with a five mile radius, closer to ten mile radius. Um, I, I think that's the, the best way to go about it, in my opinion. We are gaining five other uh, businesses um, giving options to the, to uh, locations who want to have towing. But that's not enough for me. And I think it, it goes above, above and beyond where we should be at to go to ten. Even if that's what the state says. It probably said that because it's a state law rule that might apply for rural areas. So ten miles is probably the best they could do because you might not have a towing facility within your five mile radius. So is my time up? I'm gonna ask myself. The uh, so, you know, what works in Pensacola or, you know, Lake City is not going to work in a, having operated area like Deerfield. So um, I, I think five miles is, is absolutely reasonable. So that's my opinion.
Question? Yes. Uh, according to the lease sheet, some towing companies may not want to tow, let's say, your private property. Somebody parked in your driveway for three days and you've had enough. You call a towing company. Do we have enough towing companies within the five mile radius to accommodate you? And what if they all? Do we have enough towing companies within the five-mile radius to accommodate you? And what if they all say no?
We have fourteen currently.
Okay. If you think that's enough, fine.
I do.
Okay.
That's my.
You're answering my question. Thank you.
Well, I'm just looking. That's what we just talked about. So, that's, that's part. So, I hope I'm correct in that. That's definitely correct.
Otherwise, you may have a car lost on your lawn for three weeks in your ar- custody status.
Uh, Commissioner Drosky?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I'm, I would be in favor of the ten, though. The whole reason the state put in the ten-mile requirement in is to encourage competition. Uh, the Commissioner, Brian, I said it earlier before, uh, with respect to the food trucks, you know, he doesn't want to quash business. That it's the survival of the, of the fittest. The ten-mile, you know, goes from our southern boundary to our northern boundary, and this affects many different types of properties in our city. So, I think we need to give the cities in the southern part of our s- excuse me, the businesses in the southern part of our city and businesses in the northern part of the city the most options um, available, and let them, we're putting these restrictions on them. So, let them choose what towing company they want to, to use, but they have more options uh, with the ten-mile radius, and that was the whole reason behind it. So, I don't see any reason to deviate from staff's freedom of recommendation on this.
No, I, I mean, in my opinion, I think that's a valid point, and I totally agree with that as far as competition, certainly, because of those other options. Having seen, you know, I, I don't want to blanket the entire industry, but it's the state in general. Uh, anybody that's had a deal with a towing company, usually it's not a pleasant experience. It's not easy that. Um, adding more of them into the city is good in some ways, but I think bad in other ways. But to me, I, I, I think I'm comfortable with five. You know, something proves to be wrong later down the road, uh, I may be open-minded to it. But I think five is where we need to be at.
Make a motion to approve with ten.
Yeah.
I'm second.
Oh, thank you. I'm going to make a motion to close, uh, close the public hearing. Okay, so we have a motion for Commissioner Drosky to second. Yeah. For, for a ten-mile radius. Everything else stays the same. Correct. Ten-mile radius. Then we have a second move, Commissioner Part S. Okay, we'll call.
Commissioner Drosky?
Yes.
Commissioner, will you do that?
Yes.
Commissioner Part S?
Yes.
Commissioner Austin?
Yes.
Commissioner?
No.
All right, number nine on the agenda is a discussion of potential action regarding the use of a veto-keep-in multipurpose deal by Key Club Foundation for the purposes of hosting an event titled Elevation Fest.
Thank you. And Mayor, this, uh, this item was sponsored by Vice Mayor Preston, so I'd like to provide him the first opportunity to speak on this.
Um. I just think that, uh, this item um, is a benefit to, uh, community. Um, you know, if, um, if there are any questions about the details of it, sure, someone from, uh, the Department for Public Safety can, uh, talk about this. Um, this is the Key Club Foundation Incorporated, and, uh, I support it.
Is there anyone from the public here comment on this side? Yes, Gwen Clark Reed?
Thank you, Mayor. Gwen Clark Reed, fourteen thirty, Southwest Sixth Way. Um, Deerfield. I just wanted to, um, understand that this is Key Club, not attached to Kiwanis. Um, and, uh, also in the application, they state that BSO will be their security. Uh, who is paying BSO? Those are my two questions about this application, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, do we know who's paying? Uh, or anyone else in the public here comment? I'm going to close it to the public.
Yeah. Please, Key Club.
Okay. Uh, Gwen, you might want to mute yourself at this point. Um, commission, and can we get some, uh, answers to those questions?
Mayor, I can really only speak to the fee waivers that will apply to the city. I'm not sure, uh, Captain Brumlow can speak to the, any fees associated uh, with the Broward Sheriff's Office, but they're, they're not borne on the city as far as I can tell from the application.
So, if they fail to provide BSO as a, as their security, I mean, that obviously causes them to lose the ability to have the benefit. Is that correct?
Um, I, I think we would, I'd have to speak to Captain Brumlow to weigh the requirement for security at the event based on the type of event that it is. But I, I can say that this is not the first time that we've had, uh, an organization come forward with mental health initiatives at our facilities. And, um, we have had law enforcement there. Uh, whether or not they have been there in the capacity of support or security, I, I cannot say, but they have been there nonetheless.
Uh, there is a typo in the, uh, application. It's Key Club and not Kiwanis, for the record, in case we have any issues with that. Um, Commissioner Drosky?
Did we get the date for this particular event? Um, Vice Mayor, do you happen to know? I mean, someone, I mean, I just, you know, it's an addendum, an add-on, which I've never really been in favor of, so I don't know when this event is, why it needs to be an add-on and not, uh, to the next agenda?
I don't have it. Uh, August fifteenth, according to the value.
Yes. Yes, the reason why it was added as an, as an addendum is because it would not meet the next, uh, agenda. And there are fees that they requested to be waived, which require commission approval.
Okay. I, I missed that. Thank you.
When did they come forward with this event?
Uh, to be honest, uh, Mayor, I was made aware of it late last week. Uh, when the process was initiated, I, I cannot say, but I know it came to my attention late la- last week.
Okay, because the date on the application says seven fourteen. Um, so I, I can see why. It, what I don't understand is it probably should have just been added regularly if that's what's.
Yes, and I think there was, Mayor, there was some confusion regarding, um, waiving of, of the fees from the applicant and, and, and staff. So, when, I think when it was finally realized that the, that if you are requesting these fees to be waived, it does need to go before the city commission. It was at that point where, uh, where we came into this issue.
Okay. All right. Looking for a motion.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion from Vice President Preston, the second by Commissioner Part S. We'll call, please.
Commissioner Drosky?
Yes.
Commissioner, who that?
Yes.
Commissioner Part S?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Westman?
Yeah.
Please, yes.
Yes.
We are now at comments by administration and legal. I'll go first. I have no, uh, additional comments tonight. I'll turn it over to the manager.
Thank you. And I do have a few for this evening. Um, Mayor, if, if I may expand upon the public comment as it related to uh, the Pioneer Park Boat Ramp and, and some of the other park amenities that we are working.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Um, first to go over the Pioneer Park Boat Ramp, there's actually two sections of this project. There is the dock, and then there is the boat ramp. And the dock is well underway. The permitting has been approved, and we expect that contractor to, um, begin either later this week or next week. The repair for that project is, is estimated to take only approximately three days. Uh, so by the end of next week, we anticipate that the dock portion of that of Pioneer Park Boat Ramp area will be complete. That was the area where we had a vehicle actually drive up on it and, and destroy that portion. The Pioneer Park Boat Ramp itself, um, is still requiring Army Corps of Engineer permitting. Army Corps of Engineer permitting is, um, not a, a, a fast process. Um, so we are, we are engaged with them to try to get that approved as quickly as possible. And we are also, um, I want to just thank staff, um, for their efforts to pursue grant opportunities to complete this project that's this, that this was unbudgeted repair that we had. And we are seeking Florida inland navigation grant funding for this. And our preliminary conversations with the Florida inland navigation district, they do, they have said that this does qualify for grant opportunity. And when find does meet in September, we do anticipate their approval, which will allow us to hopefully align with the approval of the Army Corps of Engineers to move forward with, um, construction of, of that portion of the project. Um, there were also some other, uh, park updates that I, that I wanted to, uh, bring to the commission's attention. The tiki huts are on the beach are underway. We were able to complete one of them. Um, but there is a stall in, uh, materials for the other two, which is, uh, delaying us until next week uh, on the other two tiki huts that we need to repair. This delaying material.
You can go through a pile of bulk trash and then pull out enough stuff to get it done?
That's a good suggestion, but I, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't know about the quality of those palm fronds, uh, Mayor. Uh, but that's a, that's a good suggestion. Um, quite frankly, in, in all reality, when it comes to construction materials and, uh, fleet repair materials, to be honest with you, I am getting reports of delays, uh, consistently. And it is a sign of the times of, of the pandemic and the, the further, um, it's, it's further claws into, to what we're trying to, to do it and, and society just in general. It's, um, these delays are, it's labor delays and it's material delays that we're seeing time and time again on, on many projects, not just within government, but it's happening across the board. Um, so, but that is, that is well underway, and we, we hope that that will be completed next week. Um, the showers over at, uh, the, the, the middle school, again, those, those showers are, are operational. They have been. There's two shower stalls that have been closed off. Um, the permits for the aquatic center portion of the middle school athletic, uh, facility, we are just waiting on materials for that metal roof to be installed. And, and being in a metal roof, the, there is a delay in that. You did just approve tonight the athletic section of, of the, the roofing that needs to be completed. And so we will be issuing that purchase order very quickly to hopefully align the material order, um, on that project. So, all of those roofs are being handled right now. And we, um, will, will, we should still see some significant improvement to there. And once that's done, those two restrooms and the, um, women's, the women's area of the aquatic center can be reopened. As you know, uh, we had a very successful Little League State Championship, uh, event. Uh, all the scoreboards were operational. All the lights were operational. We received positive feedback regarding the condition of that area and those fields. And I want to thank staff for all their hard work to make sure that that got completed on time. We've, um, the bleacher end caps at the middle school, those are, are complete. We've also installed them at West Side Park. Um, we're then moving over to Pioneer Park to, to install those on the bleachers over at Pioneer Park. And, and from what I understand, these are just additional end caps that go on to them. They're plastic. And, and as, as you may know, if you sit on a bleacher that has the metal end caps, it can snag on your clothes, and these plastic ones kind of prevent that. So, this is an additional end cap that we're installing on these, on these bleacher systems. Um. Those are all the updates that I had on, on, on parks amenities, unless there were any other questions that the commission may have regarding that.
Uh, you mentioned the, um, the issues that we're having over the Little League, uh, fields, all of them, all of the issues that we have over there.
Correct. The scoreboards and the lighting have all been correct.
Yeah.
Um, also for my comments this evening, I would like to, um, discuss and just make the city commission aware. I've talked to many of you individually, but I have not had the opportunity to speak to all of you about this, although um, I, I, I think I know where you may, how you may feel about this. Um, as you know, here I am doing this commission meeting via Zoom. Although I am vaccinated, um, I have, uh, contracted COVID nineteen. And I'm not the only one. There are people every day, uh, getting this, this, this virus, and the, the rate of transmission of the Delta variant is extremely alarming. Uh, Broward County now averages more than nine thousand new cases. It's a seventeen, we're at a seventeen percent positivity rate. Um, and just about a month and a half, maybe two months ago, we were below five percent. Hospital admissions are going through the roof. Recently, um, I implemented an administrative, uh, order for employees that requires all employees while, uh, indoors to wear, uh, public, to wear masks when they cannot, when they're not by themselves. Um, I believe that at this time, it is in the best interest of the employees of the city of Deerfield Beach and the public who do come into City Hall and other public facilities to implement a mask mandate until such time as we see these cases decline and the positivity rate decline as well. Um, this does not require city commission approval. However, I did want to discuss this with the, the whole commission to ensure that there was no grave disagreement with that administrative order.
No grave disagreements? No.
Thank you for your support. I appreciate that.
Be sure to.
I do not have a great disagreement, but I'm wondering if we need to go further. Uh, in the last three days, the state of Florida has identified over almost fifty-one thousand cases of COVID for three days. Um, earlier this year, uh, when we had a state of emergency, uh, we spread out the dais to have two of the commissioners off-site. Uh, and I'm wondering if, um, circumstances are to that point where we may need to reconsider doing that, when we have two people in Zoom, and then two people on the dais, and going back and forth uh, until we are out of this. And, uh, we have at least one commissioner who, um, is very susceptible, and I'm worried about his health. And, um, that might be something that we want to consider. Um, so I, I would like to see what we can bring that forward, and see what the commission's thoughts work on, on meeting something like that, if that's something that's a little powerful.
Mr. Sam Teague?
Well, um, to be, that really is at the discretion of the city commission. However, I think it's important to understand the difference of where we are today versus where we were under an emergency order because we are no longer under emergency order. I would fully support that. Um, and, and we have implemented that in the past. And so from, from a logistical standpoint and an operational standpoint for our city commission meetings, I'm more than happy to make that work for the city commission. But I would like to allow maybe the city attorney, um, if he has any comment related to our ability to do that.
Hey, Mr. Manager, um, as the manager mentioned, uh, we no longer have an emergency order, uh, in place, or, or we're, we're not in a state of local, a state of emergency uh, at the state level. Uh, so with that, you know, we kind of go to, back to the traditional analysis for telephonic, uh, participation or participation, uh, in a non-physical form. Of course, you will be required to always have a physical, uh, majority, uh, of the commission to hold a meeting. Um, but ultimately, what the Attorney General opinion say, uh, when you're outside of a, you know, a state of emergency is essentially, uh, it should be reserved for extraordinary circumstances, but ultimately, it's up to the commission to determine, uh, what is and what is not. That's such a circumstance. Um, so if you want to go to that direction, what my suggestion to you would be, uh, you know, make a motion finding that the circumstances warrant that. Um, you know, at least for the time being, for, you know, for the next, you know, X amount of meetings. If you want to go in that direction.
I'll make that motion.
Do you need a motion?
I think it's preferable to have it on the record, Mayor, that the, that the, uh, commission has made the finding that the circumstances warrant, uh, to allow for that type of participation going forward.
First off, second, I have a question. Um, hasn't the governor ruled that we no longer can do electronic meetings?
So, there, I'll take that one. Uh, there was an order in place, uh, many months ago when, when COVID started, shortly thereafter, that, that provided for, for purely virtual meetings, uh, meaning, um, you know, you wouldn't even necessarily. Meaning, you know, you wouldn't even necessarily have to have a physical forum president. He did that under his emergency powers. That order is no longer in place. I think what's being proposed is not that you're going to a purely, as I understand the commissioner's proposal, you're not going to a purely virtual meeting. You will, you would still have a physically present quorum of the commission at the dais, which is required and we can't, you know, exempt that, in my opinion, at least as of right now with the current state of, you know, the emergency orders not being in effect. But what you could do is make a finding that the circumstances warrant allowing for, you know, let's say up to two commissioners to participate telephonically or electronically via Zoom, given that, you know, the COVID-19 circumstances and where we're at.
So we would still need a quorum of three out of five.
That's correct. You would need a quorum of three physically present, the same way, you know, that we did it there for, for many months where we had three of you present and I believe, you know, you took turns and participated that way. Mayor, you had a motion in the second.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was in a, I'm just curious as to what the, I think the city manager, excuse me, the city attorney was looking for some time element to it. And I don't know that I heard one. Is there, is this just an open-ended motion? Or is there a, making some kind of determination as to how long this will last and to always keep renewing it as theory. But I just didn't hear that. I just want some clarification.
If I make, make a suggestion. Thank you. Mayor and city commissioners, we, we may just want to, to address this possibly within the comments portion of each meeting, which would allow us to gauge, you know, where we are with, with the rising cases. And we can, we can base it off of that. As we did with the emergency, under the emergency order, this was something that I, I individually talked to each one of you about and made a determination based on my individual feedback from you. That can also.
I understood the motion initially from Commissioner Huak. He said that this will be in place until the pandemic was over.
I, I think I'm going to amend the motion to stay for 30 days and then review it in 30 days. I'll second that.
You have your original second.
Yeah.
Okay. You have a motion to second. Okay. All right. Good roll call.
Yes.
Commissioner Huak.
Yes.
Commissioner Myers.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Did you have any further comments, Mr. Manager?
Yes, I did. I had one more. I would like, if I may, have Captain Brimlow provide a brief presentation. Recently, I believe it's the FBI or Department of Law Enforcement, he will correct me, I'm sure. They did provide updates to their, their crime statistics. And I thought, when he shared that with me, it was very exciting. And I thought it's very important to show the, the city commission the results of, of that. And so if I could have Captain Brimlow come up and present this information, I would, I would appreciate that. And this will be my last item for the evening. Thank you for your patience tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, Commissioners and residents of Deerfield Beach. There have been questions that have come up legally about crime in Deerfield. And the FBI collects crime data. We report that as part of the Broward Sheriff's Office, we report that to the FBI. And then that information is collected and collated and then disseminated back to us from the Florida Department of Law Enforcement. And so I took the data from that, go to the next slide. Took the data from that over the last couple of years, maybe just a second to look at that and did a comparison with some marker cities that you see at the top. Obviously the state of Florida and then the three counties. And then after that, some indicator cities of Miami Beach, Fort Lauderdale, Miami Gardens. These cities are either indicator cities within that county, which means they're the seat of that county, or they're cities that are either contiguous with Deerfield Beach or a similar type of beach community. So for example, there's Boynton Beach on there, Delray Beach, Jupiter. These are communities that are similar in some ways to Deerfield Beach. So you can see that that is the crime rate is the number that you're seeing. And those numbers are based on normalized to a population of 100,000. So obviously the cities are different sizes, but they normalize the numbers to 100,000. And it's important to look at cities that are of similar style or similar size because small variations in a small city can throw that crime rate way off compared to others. So, you know, if you have a, a city where you only have two burglaries a year and this year you have three, you suddenly have a 50% increase in the crime rate. So these are normalized for that. You can see 2018 is where we were and you can see where we fit into the whole listing of cities. We were doing okay in 2018, 2019, we started doing even better. We dropped slightly, dropping means a lower crime rate. And, and then if you go to the next slide, please. You'll see 18 and then 20. You may want to move the pictures on the side or minimize that for a second. Are you able to do that? Oh, you can't click on that? Okay. Well, it doesn't show on here, which is the important part is the, so you'll see that the populations are there. Deerfield right around 80,000 and the other cities that were chosen were similar in that. Are you able to move the pictures to the left? I'm sorry. Oh, it's not you. Oh, who has been a host?
Others, are you able to move it?
I, I am not. It's the computer to the sign where Anthony's sitting.
You want to just there you go. So you'll see that over the two-year change, Deerfield's crime rate has dropped 34%. And, and I, I report this because this is, this is the FBI collecting this data and coming back to us. You can see where Deerfield falls. Crime rates almost equal to local or town. They're slightly, slightly lower than ours. Of course, our crime rate is dropping faster than those, but Hollywood, Davie, Boynton, Pompano Beach way up at the top of the list, Beverly Dade Beach, et cetera. So just to give the commission and the residents idea of where we are and where we're going. There's no crime at all that's acceptable, but we also balance that with the fact that we're never going to get rid of all of the crime. So the idea is to stay in a trajectory where we're constantly making headway on reducing crime in the city and especially in the violent crime, which we've taken a huge chunk out of violent crime over the last couple of years. So I wanted to share that because I know that sometimes citizens come up here and present information. I don't know where it's coming from. These numbers are from the FBI that are collected and presented back to us from the Florida Department of Law Enforcement. I'll answer any questions if you have it.
Somebody, so somebody comes up, says what the FBI says that we rank here is very prestigious. That's keeping in mind, looking at every city, no matter what size of population.
Correct. So if you, if you look at Florida overall, Florida overall has a pretty decent crime rate. The issue is you've got West Florida, you've got Lake City. You also have Fort Lauderdale mixed into that. So it's the whole, the whole gamut. And the problem with that is it doesn't take into consideration the difference demographics, the different arrangements. For example, Coconut Creek's crime rate is lower than ours, but it's a bedroom community. Same as like a West or Wellington, which are on that list as well.
But there could be a increase in crime, not as much as ours.
Correct, correct, close, not quite as much, correct. We won't tell Butch that. But yes, that is, so that, that gives you the idea in our surrounding areas. And certainly the range is very, very broad. You know, you do have some very small, well, Wellington's not particularly small, but 60,000 residents there with very low crime rates, all the way up to some of the larger cities. Delray Beach is a smaller city than us, but with a crime rate almost 4,700, 400,000. So this just gives you a perspective. And Deerfield, like I said, we're not, we're not, plenty crimes eliminated, but our goal is to be on a trajectory, constantly battling and constantly reducing the crime rate and making us in a better position.
Excellent.
Any questions?
We sure do.
Thank you. Great job, by the way, your whole staff. Really appreciate everything that you can do for us. But I noticed that everybody's crime is less, if you could put that back up there. Nobody's given up. What do you attribute that to? Every city is down.
Right. Well, I'll tell you that, so there are nuances to how the crime went. And crime overall did go down. And what you, what is important to realize is that one of the drivers of crime in larger cities is that, that's one of the bigger portions of the crime rate. That is counted into the overall crime rate. So during COVID, when many businesses were shut down, there wasn't much of that. So that accounted for a good portion of some of the drops that you see across the board. And as long as we're staying ahead of that, I feel good about that, what we're doing. So if you look up at the top part of that and you see the 21, 19, 22 and 21%, somewhere around 20% has been the typical two-year drop. And so we're pacing at about a 34% drop. So, you know, when we're ahead of that curve, that, that makes me feel like we're, we're on the right track and we're continuing down the path that is getting us where we want to be. But you're correct. So overall, there has, and that is because many places, that is the retail theft is a very big mover of crime.
Thank you, Chief. That's why we like to get our stats from someone with that as opposed to someone in a recorder.
Absolutely.
Okay, item number, item number 10 is a resolution of the city commission of the City of Deerfield Beach, Florida approving and accepting a quick claim deed from the City of Deerfield Beach, formerly known as the Town of Deerfield Beach, for the Deerfield Beach Memorial Center, providing for implementation and an effective date.
Vice Mayor, I know you brought this forward.
Yes, I would, Mayor. Appreciate the opportunity to speak on this. Segregation was a tough thing for this country. Whether it was legal or illegal, and yes, that was a time where segregation was legal. But it just did not extend, just with the experiences of people on a daily basis. It actually extended into death. So we don't want to be able to interact with each other due to skin color when we're breathing. But when there's no more life in the body, that was extended as well. Don't want to live with you, don't want to be buried. And that's a very difficult thing when you think about how you fit into a community, to a society and how we're supposed to deal with that. The question becomes, can we ever get past that? Is there any glimmer of hope? Or is it something that would be malignant in our ability to live together forever? I'm an optimist and I tend to believe in the greater good of what this country can become. But you cannot get there unless you recognize from where you came. And sometimes there is an urgency to push it all to the side. I don't want to talk about the Navy. And until we talk about the Navy, we'll never be able to understand our true potential. Many years ago, this city accepted a criteria in, in the cemetery that will deed this property over to you, provided no blasts will be ever buried in this cemetery. What a criteria. But here's the real problem, isn't that, that's what was proposed, the real problem is the city accepted that term. The city accepted that and said, okay. And they moved forward with it. And so a black police officer who had served this community and served it with his life, putting his life on the line for the citizens of Deerfield Beach. When he passed away, with some of the relationships that he had made in our department and some of those people being white, wanted to be buried in high view. But he was not allowed because he was black. And so there we are. So how do we deal with this? And when that came up and it made national news, and I remember when it did, there was multiple challenges with that, is how we figured that in there. But I've also said before, I think it's incumbent upon all of us to be optimistic. We got to believe in the greater good. And so understanding those challenges, we have to constantly examine, are we moving ahead? Are we getting any better? We need to look at that. It's important that we do. Because if we don't, we will remain exactly where we are. Mayor Howard wasn't allowed to be buried. Eventually he was allowed to be buried there, but he was initially denied because of who he was. I'm so proud of the people that I've talked to about that, that were black and white. All unanimously agreed that that was wrong. So it wasn't just a black issue, it was a community issue, our issue. And so with that, there has been a hostility from some in District Two to say, I don't want to be buried there because of that, because of that stain. And so that stigma stayed in place until now. I want everybody to know, especially those in District Two, those that were offended by such harsh policies, that those policies no longer exist. I will also tell you, there is many people in all of the districts, District One and District Three and Four, which are primarily white, that did not agree with this. They did not. And our city manager, along with our city attorney, looked at the language in that initial deed to see that it was unconstitutional. It was not fair. And so there was a quick claim deed, which is basically that we needed it to ourselves again and cleaned up the language. And you see, when we look at where the start was, it was very native. But tonight, look at where the end is. Everybody, you know, if they lost a loved one, they are welcome in that cemetery. That once denied by people, the ability to be buried there. This becomes an example of what we're able to do if we are able to come together, you know, as not only a community, but, but as a country, recognizing you're wrong, recognizing something that hurt, recognizing that something gets divided and being willing to fix it. That issue was not a black problem, was a white problem. It was the City of Deerfield Beach's problem. And together, the City of Deerfield Beach has come together and gave hope and brought life to the greater good because that policy no longer exists. I would like to thank city staff and Mrs. Sorokin for the hard work that they did in getting the language right. So that now that this represents a better part of what Deerfield Beach is all about. So that part is dead, it no longer exists. And I thank them very much. I'm really happy that it no longer exists. A representation of what we can do if we just work at it. We can get better at things, making a better community if we try. We're not going to always agree, but we have to be willing to understand that one community heard a little bit more of this officer. Yours all, who said, no, that's not the case today because we have made a difference. And I really thank the city staff for their hard work in this, in this process.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. And actually, you should be very proud of yourself. Thank you for bringing this forward. I was aware of this and I really appreciate all the effort from staff and everybody to kind of educate us on this, but also to take this motion, move it forward. It shouldn't have been done a long time ago. Great job. Great job. I appreciate it. Is there anyone from the public who care to comment on the side? I'm going to go ahead and close it to the public. I'm gonna go ahead and close it to the public then. Permission? Oh, okay, I'm gonna reopen it to the public. Clark Reed.
Thank you, Mayor. Gwen Clark Reed, fourteen thirty, Southwest Sixth Way, Deerfield Beach. Um, I am very happy to see this happen this evening. Um, but also, I want you to understand, Commissioners and Mayor, that this does not negate the, uh, thought of people in this community about finding more land to expand Pine View Cemetery. So, um, although this has happened, um, I'm, know that there are members of the community, and quite a few of them, who would like to be buried in the community, and are looking forward to, uh, some kind of resolve over the purchase of existing land that can be used as the cemetery. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Going to close it to the, again, to the public. Permission?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Permission by the Vice Mayor, second by Commissioner Parnas. Um, let's do roll call.
Commissioner Dossing?
Yes.
Commissioner Dossing?
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Preston?
Yes.
Yes. We are now on comments by Mayor and City Commissioner. Let's go with, uh, District Four first.
I, um, Mr. City Manager, during the meeting tonight, I've been receiving messages from the residents of Waterford Homes that their garbage was not picked up today, so I don't know if that had anything to do with the weather, uh, which basically was raining all day, long or not, but the, um, they're, they're alleging that the garbage was not picked up today, so, um, just giving you a heads up and see if that can be picked up tomorrow, please. I'm sure you all vigorously read, as I do, for Trend Magazine, uh, it's a must-read every, every month.
I want to go to sleep.
And the July issue, um, actually had a very pertinent article talking about recycling in the state of it here in Florida. And, um, our own Sustainable Management Director, Chad Jurassic, is quoted in the article. It's, it's pretty lengthy, but it's actually a really good read, it gives you the history to recycling, where we are, and the predicament that we are in going, going forward. So to any, the reason I bring this up is to any of your residents that ask, you know, why are we not recycling? Um, this is a great article to, to forward to them to, to read, and, and gives them basically the entire picture all, all at once. And it doesn't hurt that we're excited in there as well. So, I, I found it very good, and, you know, a lot of what we've discussed in these meetings. Uh, but going forward, if you wanted my PDF, and send it to the residents that ask, I think they'll be greatly educated by that. Other than that, I do have my Saturday office hours this Saturday. Um, however, I am going to the backpack giveaway first, which is at ten o'clock over at Main and Bikini, I'm sure somebody's going to bring that up. Uh, so it's only from eleven to noon, but I'll stay as long as anyone wants me to, but I, the opening appointments have been locked off, so I can go over to the backpack giveaway first. And just check my notes, but I think that's all I have tonight. That's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Mr. Mayor, Clark Reed.
Yeah, I have a few words to say. I see many, too many people with no masks on. My brother-in-law was vaccinated, got COVID and died. Being vaccinated is extremely important. Nothing is a hundred percent. Some people die taking aspirin. That doesn't mean we shouldn't take aspirin. We are in a crisis. More people contracted the disease the last few days than ever before in Florida. Want to commit suicide, jump in front of a train. Get vaccinated, wear masks, wash your hands, sanitize like your life depends on it. Because it's not only your life, it's the life of your family and your friends. You may be walking around as a carrier without showing any symptoms, and infecting people who are not vaccinated. I do not understand people not wanting to be vaccinated. Is it they have a death wish? Do they totally disregard science? Do they not read a newspaper that ninety percent of all the new hospital cases are unvaccinated people? Let that sink in. Only ten percent have previously been vaccinated. Ninety percent unvaccinated people. I don't understand the governor, who says any school that asks kids to wear masks, they'll pull money away from. Why? It's for their safety, and the safety of their teachers, and the staff, and their own parents, because kids can be carriers, so they can bring it home to mommy and daddy, and sisters and brothers. Why would anybody not want to wear a mask and defeat this terrible virus, the most deadly one in our lifetime? I don't understand it. Somebody's gonna have to explain to me why it's not important to save a life. That's all I have for this week.
Thank you, Mr. Two.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, first of all, uh, there will be a District Two meeting on the thirty-first at the Hillsboro Technology Center. Now, what you need to know, there's gonna be a hybrid meeting, um, a public works, workshop, uh, on the tape, about the tape center. Well, some of that, the mayor had asked for, want to, do some more input from the people, that will be done at that District Two. Uh, if you have any questions, please call me, nine five four seven two eight five eight eight six, nine five four seven two eight five eight eight six. Again, District Two meeting, August thirty-first, is at the Hillsboro Technology Center, seven PM. But, but it's also slash a public workshop on the tape center, get some more input. Um, I have been in Deerfield Beach a long time, and I've seen so many people, you know, uh, who really care about this community, uh, work and do the things that they need to do in order to elevate standards in this community. Harold Morrison was just such a man. You know, you know, I challenge my colleagues to go over to go be, and keep, tell them walk that area, especially, you know, the Stanley Terrace area, you need to walk in there, see what it's all about. I've done it since it's happened. There's so many challenges there, so many kids growing up, that, um, you know, there's not a lot of hope. Harold Morrison saw a problem, maybe years ago, and instead of just talking about it, he began to get involved. He did so much work over there, which he will never be acknowledged for, of working with those kids, and providing, quote, structuring kids. I s- I saw it firsthand, I remember certain incidents where he was talking to a lot of, you know, to some of the kids that came out of that complex. And the things that he said to them was just so important and inspirational. He made a difference. He will never be credited for the robberies that he stopped. But I want to tell you, there were a lot of, how do I know that? Because, other than what he said to those kids, and how he dealt with that situation, they would have gone down the wrong road. He prevented that. He was a tremendous, tremendous, tremendous man, cared about the city of Deerfield Beach. And, you know, he must not be forgotten. Uh, the, the backpack giveaway thing that, uh, he was so much involved with. I think he started it. Yeah, and, uh, he, he just, you know, he was always education, trying to point the kids in the right direction. No, no, stay out of the streets. Did he ever get enough love for it? I don't, I don't know. But, you know, I would ask my colleagues. Also, you know, we passed a, uh, a resolution at the last meeting for veterans to be given a complimentary pass here. Um, and we said, hey, let's pass this and talk about what I had brought up, because I wanted to pass, but then that was barred by the police officers. Uh, be extended, that same privilege, complimentary pass under four on the pier. I think that would be, I'm gonna ask that, that, you know, that we extend that. Uh, I would like to see that, um, you know, if you need, uh, that needs to be put on the agenda, I would like for it to do so uh, for next, uh, commission meeting, and we'll deal with it then. Uh, there is a back-to-school giveaway, backpack and supplies giveaway, uh, Saturday, the seventh, ten AM, for one PM, that's it, you'll be, be the, uh, complex. So please, uh, invite everybody that you know, a family that's in need, have them come out. And, uh, the next thing is, the flooding problem that we saw pictures of, uh, that was brought up by, uh, Mr. Dolan. Uh, we have to pay attention to that, we just can't look at the pictures and just say that, that's tough. The mayor said that we wanted some, sort of an emergency, uh, you know, truck or whatever it takes to help the situation, meaning that it can't be immediately resolved. I totally, totally agree with that. We have to do some, you just can't look at these pictures and just say, well, you know, we're, we're working on it. That doesn't, that, that doesn't work. And, and he said something to me that really kind of touched me. He says, you know, all these things that happen, he actually complimented everybody that's doing a great job. But he asked us to do more. That challenge is on us, and whatever more is, that, that the mayor said, whatever that is, I totally agree with it. We, we have to take ten trucks and put them out there, and we need to do it, because we can't allow to look at pictures like this, know that this happens, know that people's homes are being destroyed, and say, well, we're doing the best that we can. But guess what? Our best isn't good enough. We gotta do better. We must do better. I totally agree with him. But you know, the bigger thing is, it would be easy, you know, I don't live in that district, it's not about this big, he lives in the city, I live in the city, we're all, uh, here in the city, we pay taxes, that's our neighbor. And it's not going good, it's incumbent upon us to do something about it. That's our job. That's why we sit here, to make a difference. And if all that we can say is that we're gonna just do the best that we can, then we're not making the difference that we, we need to make. So, Mayor, whatever it is that you want, count me in. Count me in. And the last thing that I have is that during the public comment portion of tonight, we saw a guy get up and walk out. And he confronted the mayor, uh, of, you don't want to debate, this is all about one opinion. And if you look at that, you might actually get the wrong idea, because debate is not silenced here. But there has to be structure to these meetings. Could you imagine if everybody watched the debate and there is no structure? But, you know, it, it just wouldn't work. And so, actually, if you see that part of it, you can unfairly point a finger at the mayor and say, you know what, this is about him, he wants to win this and that sort of thing, that's not true, that's not true. Debate is welcome here, and I want to encourage everybody to come out to the meeting to be, to be honest with you. This entire chamber should be built. We represent the people. The seat that we sit in does not belong to any one commissioner. It belongs to the people. And we must recognize that they have issues, and they have needs, that we have to address. It's important that we, they understand that we care, and I want the people that are watching to not understand that you're not being pushed away. There will be challenges, but, but, but your opinion is important. And so, if there is an issue, comment, let's talk about it. Doesn't mean that we can talk about it all night. But I can tell you what I've seen personally, I have seen every one of these Commissioners, after the meeting, standing in the park and, uh, talking to people, continuing a conversation that they couldn't continue inside. So don't tell me that they don't care, because it's not true. But you, but when you don't get it your way, you get up and you walk out, and you take cheap shots. What's that all about? If you really believe in something, sit in that seat, and wait till this committee, meeting is over, say, can I talk to you? I will guarantee you that any one of these Commissioners and the mayor would say, yeah, let's talk about it. Doesn't mean in the end it's gonna go your way, but don't paint the picture to be one-sided, because that's unfair as well. With that kind of an action, we discourage other people not to come, because they believe, no, but it is about this one side, it's not what it's about. It's not what it's about. And so, I will not allow that to be painted in that manner. The people up here, and you see how we are, we don't always agree, you see that. But I will also tell you this, they're not unfair, and they're not mean-spirited people. And I'm not gonna let anybody say that without a rebuttal from myself. Thank you, Mayor, and say, come in.
Mr. One?
Bone beetles over here. Good God.
Go ahead, Yoko.
Yeah, exactly. Uh, well, most of my notes have already been touched upon. Um, I had my notes on, uh, Deputy Harold Morrison, but my, my notes paled in comparison to to our vice mayor's comments, and I, I can support that one hundred percent. I want to thank both the mayor, as well as the vice mayor, for supporting the Southeast State Avenue. Um, we have some fire hydrants over there, and the E B R L, and anything that we can do to expedite some solutions, uh, would be great, we appreciate. Um, as, uh, the, the voting delegate for the Florida Region Cities, uh, next week I'll be up in Orlando, uh, attending their meeting, so there will not be Fisher Point Saturday hours, uh, on the fourteenth of August, I will be in Orlando. So I'm looking forward to that, hopefully that still goes on. We're going to have a second workshop on August twenty-sixth, and I know we'll have a commission meeting for that. But, uh, the second workshop is on Northeast Third Avenue Improvements, and that affects both District One and District Two, Tenter and Paulman Hines. Uh, as most of you may know, Northeast Third Avenue is the dividing line between District Two and District One. Uh, and that road has been a headache for the residents over there. Uh, we had our first walking workshop a couple of months ago, and, um, there were some great, like, uh, recommendations from the residents. And so I'm looking forward, and I hope that the residents who are involved at least talk to one other resident, so we'll get more out there, um, to see what results and solutions, uh, the workshop has, um, resolved. With regards to COVID, as I had mentioned earlier, almost fifty-one
almost fifty-one thousand cases have been reported in the state of Florida. Last week, our ten thousand cases, which was the most at all in the state of Florida, even at the height of our pandemic. So it's, it's getting worse. And as Mr. Parnas said, ninety-six percent of those individuals that are hospitalized are not vaccinated. The vaccination is, is almost like the seatbelt. And whenever you're driving, you put on the seatbelt. It doesn't say that you're not gonna get in a car accident, but it does improve your chances of survival. And that's what this vaccine does. That's what wearing masks do. So I strongly encourage individuals to get out there and get vaccinated, to wear your masks. It was announced earlier today that vaccines have opened up again at Wild Waters. So I encourage our residents who are not vaccinated. You have a spot at Wild Waters, so you don't have to go too far. And I'm sure I can talk to the city manager, this is off the cuff, but I know in the past, individuals who had challenges driving and getting to and from the vaccines, I do believe the city, the Northeast folk, would provide some transportation to those residents. So I'm sure the city manager can touch on that, if you still have that process available. Because I don't want to speak out of turn. But please try to eliminate as many excuses as possible. And please get out of the vaccine. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it, Commissioner. Thank all of you for the work tonight. Comments as well. I'm not gonna be repetitive when it comes to getting parts of it. Support you hundred percent on the street. Backpack giveaway surely needs as well. You know, an incredible man, a big teddy bear, an individual in a huge hospital. But we're looking to have. It was announced tonight, this evening, Sunset Health reported it. Center for Disease Control Prevention issued a new eviction moratorium that lasts until October third. So this seems to jump ahead. And at least give it another moratorium when it comes to convictions, which is a good thing to know how that's gonna impact people. And it was interesting to see an article, a national article quoting someone from the city of Deerfield Beach talking about that and how they're twenty thousand dollars behind. And yet we were to give them two thousand. That comes to the perspective that, you know, those who were hit, this person worked in it and restaurant industry, people who were hit, a five-months fix to help. Beyond, you know, it helps, but they need one. So it's tremendous. I know some of you have been peppered with questions that were rated by, by a few individuals. Yes, I did move it to my home, Deerfield Beach. I still am signed to Deerfield Beach, so for the record. It doesn't matter that I provided that to the city staff. Maybe as far as saying, well, I have to open chains. So I will drive real slow. I think, I don't think we'll stop until they actually use my house. Stay with me. So, you know, can't fix soon sometimes, but that happens. But yes, I am a resident of Deerfield Beach and have the power of consent. I do wanna say that while a lot of this stuff is taking time and I get it, I, I will say this staff needs to up its game when it comes to delivering on some of these problems and fixes that we need happens. I understand that we had to make cuts during COVID and suspended some of these projects. And I understand that there's sometimes permitting and things like that. But we need to be more proactive. We need to address these things a lot faster in my case. It's great. And you know, when residents come in and say, hey, there's an issue, let's go take care of it. We're usually pretty responsive, but we need to be more proactive in attacking this stuff. And, and while there might be some, some delays and I like going out for grants and things like that, getting this permit from outside and agencies are tough. It's government, I get it. But the government problem should not be in our. So we, we, well, I, I think we can do a better job. And I know we will start doing a better job when we need to. Because there's some things to respond to outside. People look better. I've made my real clear to the city manager. My expectations are, I still see issues out there, but, and I do see improvement. But, but we can do better and do better. And to point that the vice mayor said, like, this is not, this is a place, place for us to debate issues. People come in and share their opinion. I think there seems to be a view that we're not allowed to share ours unless they share theirs. And that's not really the way it works. And, you know, when people come in or abuse the staff, they don't like the answer they get. They say, oh, you must be on crack or something like that, or kind of get somebody else stands up. They expresses a different opinion than ours. You know, the internet's a soapbox for cowards, I've always found. And, you know, when people wanna go ahead and comment and parade others, chase them down to the place they work always. Everyone's a poor single woman decided to start a petition over in District One. These people are actually calling her place of work, threatening her job and disagree with their opinion. It's a matter of people, they don't like, people don't agree with their opinion. There are more people agree with their opinion, they did get their candidates elected. That seems to fail every single time. So then maybe it's time for it says more about them than it is about us. But thank you for the comments. Thank you for everything and that's all I have. Well, I do have one thing. The city manager, I admit, brings up to you, I apologize. I know we're coming around to the, the age of our peers getting to a certain point. And that means also that our peer lease is coming up here, probably within the next couple of years or so, years. So we need to kind of make a decision of what we want to do there. So just to kind of put your thinking cap on, start thinking about that, if that's okay. Okay. Motion to adjourn for a second.
Second.